Here in Laramie, we've been waiting a long time. First item on the agenda is going to be the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you please rise and join me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, can you do a roll call, please?
Gabriel, absent. Hanson?
Here.
McKinney?
Here.
Polikas?
Here.
Shumway?
Here.
Schuster?
Here.
Stoner?
Here.
Pierce?
Here.
Somerville?
Here.
That's eight present and one absent, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Our next item is Proclamations and Presentations. And I know that we do not have anything on the agenda, but we do have somebody here who actually has a presentation for us real quick. So I would like to invite them to come up to the podium for a little bit discussion about potential age-friendly Laramie community project. So, welcome, Professor.
Great, thank you.
Can you introduce yourself and your team for the record?
Yes, I will. I also have copies of the presentation.
If you can give those to the -- actually, just send them on the clerk's desk.
Okay.
Issue them to us. Thank you.
The presentation on age-friendliness, so I figured I better be concerned about people's vision potentially, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, so thank you very much for giving me time to present this project called Age-Friendly Laramie. My name is Bernard Steinman, and I am the Research Director at the Wyoming Center on Aging at the University of Wyoming, and I am also a gerontologist and an Assistant Professor in the Department of Family and Consumer Sciences. With me tonight, I have brought a small contingent of people who are also interested in aging in our city. Sam Shumway, who some of you, I think, know, maybe some more intimately than others. He is the State Director for AARP. Christine McKibben is here. She's the Wyoming Center on Aging, the Director of the Wyoming Center on Aging. I have Tammy Comer here, and she is the Executive Director of the Epsom Center for Seniors, also known as our Senior Center. Mary Alice Schneider is here. She is the Director of the Foster Grandparents Program of the Rocky Mountains. Babette Cuadrado is a researcher at the Wyoming Center on Aging, and also Daniel Kabbage, he is a researcher in my department in Family and Consumer Sciences. So all of them are here to support this initiative. So my goal tonight is to share with you a vision of Laramie as a highly livable community for people of all ages, where adults, older adults in particular, can engage or can age in place within their homes and stay in the community. An age-friendly city is an inclusive and accessible environment that promotes active aging. Communities with an age-friendly designation are popping up all over the world. In the U.S., the AARP has launched their Age-Friendly Community Network in April of 2012, and they are serving as the U.S. affiliate for the World Health Organization program. So these things are all over the world. According to the AARP's policy principles, the general goals of an age-friendly city is to promote a community environment that improves health and engages residents by creating a cohesive community that includes a sense of place and fosters home and community-based services, delivery, and achieving other goals designed to create an age-friendly community. So currently in Wyoming, there are three entities that have age-friendly status: Casper, Jackson, Teton County, and Laramie would be our fourth. Nationally, the Age-Friendly Network has grown to 212 communities, representing many millions of constituents. So by now, everybody is probably aware of the demographic shift toward an older population. As recently as 2010, people aged 65 and older represented 13 percent of our nation's population. And by 2030, older adults will represent about 20 percent of the population, more than doubling in number from 35 million to about 72 million people. Beginning in 2011, baby boomers began to enter retirement, and every day, 10,000 baby boomers turned 65. So this is a big wave coming our direction. Promoting more age-friendly communities will be essential to meeting the challenge of this age wave, and adapting personal and community environments will be at the heart of this effort. Although Laramie is a college town, we also have a large percentage of residents who are aged 50 and older. This is a figure that I worked on, showing population growth between the census in 2000 and 2010. And of course, we have a new census on the way in a couple of years. So essentially, if you look at that middle chart showing people aged 50 to 59, many of those people have already shifted into the category on the right. So you can look at the percentages. The percentage growth between the last two censuses in that age group was 33 percent, and you can probably add that percentage to the column in the right. So we're going to have a huge number of older people in our midst. In survey after survey that is conducted to assess the preferences of older people, we find that the vast majority state that they want to age in place. About three-quarters of Americans aged 45 and older say that they want to stay in their current residence for as long as possible. And that number gets even higher. It jumps to about 88 percent when you ask people who are 65 and older. This house is an excellent example of what a good friend of mine calls Peter Pan housing. So this is housing that is designed for people who never intend to grow old. You can imagine the difficulty of getting up those stairs if you had certain problems. Fortunately, there's a lot that we can do to improve people's housing situations through home modifications and encouraging improved design of new structures. If current individuals experience losses that make it impossible for them to stay in their homes, they at least want to remain in the community. And why is this? Because people want to stay close to their friends and family and stay as close as they can to community services. One of the big issues with these age-friendly communities is the idea that transportation is really important. In, let's see, in 2025, one in five drivers will be over the age of 65, and many of our communities, especially in these, in our rural region, are not designed to support As I mentioned previously, AARP is organizing their network of age-friendly communities to encourage and recognize the improvements that make cities, towns, and counties more livable for older residents and people of all ages. The types of improvements that can be made vary widely and are usually customized to meet the needs identified for a specific community. So even though this is sort of has a general protocol that we want to follow, the changes that eventually come about are usually customized for the town. The strategic framework of the network is based on eight domains that are outlined on this slide. Each of the domains influences the health and quality of older individuals. The domains fall into three broad categories: the built environment, the social environment, and some domains that are cross-cutting across those two domains. Outdoor Spaces addresses whether there is availability of safe and accessible recreational facilities. Transportation, which is concerned with whether there are safe and affordable modes of private and public transportation. And Housing addresses whether there is a range of affordable housing options for older residents that promote ability to age in place and what options are available with respect to home modification. Within the Social Environment, Social Participation asks whether older adults have access to leisure and cultural activities and opportunities for social and civic engagement with both peers and younger people. Respect and Social Inclusion addresses whether there are programs to promote ethnic and cultural diversity, as well as multi-generational interaction and dialogue. Civic Participation and Employment asks, are there opportunities for paid work and volunteer activities for older adults who wish to do so? And opportunities to engage in the creation of policies that are relevant to their own lives. And finally, with a somewhat miscellaneous category that cuts across all these categories, Communication and Information addresses whether older adults have access to technology that helps them connect within their community, friends, and with family. And finally, Community Support and Health Services. Do they have access to home care services, health clinics, and programs that promote wellness and active aging? Residents in Laramie, I think, can be proud of the resources that we already have available to make our city extremely livable for people of all ages. To check out our rating, you can log on to the AARP Liveability Index, which scores communities on a scale from 0 to 100, with 50 being the average, for environments, services, and amenities that impact the lives of older residents. And if you do that, you will see that Laramie has an above-average rating for most of the areas that are assessed. However, there are always, there's always room for improvement in making Laramie better. So for example, Laramie's roads are relatively safe, but for older adults who may no longer drive, transportation options are very limited. Our neighborhoods are safe, but we can always improve walkability to enhance safe access to our many amenities. And the Epsom Center for Seniors provides older residents with many activities and opportunities to stay active in the community. But there are, but there are many underutilized resources in our city, including the university and the students who attend there, that could be put to use to improve opportunities for older people. Communities that join the network participate in a process of self-directed planning, implementation, and evaluation of improvements that make sense to the specific community. The process of becoming an age-friendly community entails four phases that encompass a five-year cycle. Phase one is the enrollment phase. To enroll in the network, municipal leaders, including the mayor and the city council, write a brief letter requesting membership from AARP and committing to meeting the World Health Organization's criteria. And that is why I'm here, actually, to try to get some buy-in from the city. To move forward, we must have the city behind us as we begin to establish age-friendly Laramie. We must also establish a mechanism for involving older people in all the stages of the process. For example, in the coming weeks, we will be convening an Advisory Citizens Committee made up of older residents. Also, in the first phase, we will conduct a baseline assessment of age-friendliness of the community in which we articulate the specific needs of older adults and estimate their contributions and their connection to the community. After enrollment in the network, Phase Two, in years one and two, involve developing a community-wide action plan, so what it is that we want to, that we want to do. And in years three through five, we implement the plan and conduct a formal evaluation of the plan to see what benefits or what outcome that we've had. It's very important for me to emphasize that all of this is a community-based process. Members of the local community, including myself and the people that I introduced earlier and other diverse stakeholders, set the goals for the community, implement the activities, and evaluate our outcomes. So where are we now? Currently, we are in the stage of gathering leadership. I've already mentioned some of the people that are involved here, myself, from the Wyoming Center on Aging. We've got the Epsom Center on board. We are hoping to have enthusiastic support from the city. Sam Shumway has been very supportive of our efforts thus far and hopefully will continue when we apply. And we are also gathering many, many other stakeholders. Our next steps are to convene a community visioning, a set of community visioning meetings. So at these meetings, we will draw residents and ask them, what do they think, how do they visualize Laramie in the next 10 years with respect to their aging needs? We will begin a process of committee formation to get input from citizens and to have them really running the show. And after we've done all that, in the next several months, we hope to acquire enrollment within the, within the Age-Friendly Network from AARP. Most of the communities that have enrolled in the network have already done extensive work to improve their age-friendliness and livability. One of the greatest benefits of joining the network is the recognition of those efforts. Other benefits are the access to peer review, assessment, and best practices by other communities. So there's a lot of interaction between communities who have already sort of forged a path in this area. One of the activities that AARP organizes to facilitate this process is a once-a-year conference of age-friendly community members, and this is usually held in the fall. In addition to these benefits, becoming age-friendly in itself is a means to support economic growth in the city and to promote the well-being of its citizens of all ages. So why is Laramie an important, Age-Friendly Laramie an important initiative? Because age-friendly communities are good places to live for people of all ages, and they are key to addressing the needs of the coming baby boomer age wave and subsequent generations. As the slide reads, "Our aim is to continue toward a community that is safe and secure, has affordable and appropriate housing and transportation options, and has supportive community features and services. Once these features are in place, they will enhance personal independence and allow our residents to age in place and foster engagement of residents in the community's civic, economic, and social life." So, thank you for the opportunity to address your gathering. In your packets that I've given you, there is included this slide, which directs you to several online livable community resources that AARP publishes. I also encourage you to stay up to date on the work of AARP via the Livable Communities' monthly e-newsletter. This is free, and it's a handy way to stay informed about new livable community materials and content. You can subscribe at the link provided. So with that, I will stop, and if you have questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Professor.
Thank you, Your Honor. I noticed the committee is relatively young, so they can serve on this group for some time. I'm probably the only one who is old enough to be a beneficiary. The one thing that occurs to me is, we just had a recent retreat for the council, and I brought forward an issue which found no resonance among the other counselors, and that was the idea of public transportation. Yay! You mentioned it here, that that should be one of our goals to pursue. And I exhort the council to come back to this idea. We have all these, three wonderful goals, which I don't dispute, but I thought that was a fourth goal, which was very important, as we are aging, as we see here, okay? And I would like to, from that perspective, revisit the idea of that we do need, because it serves a red thread that goes right through it. If you don't have public transportation for these folks, you're kind of sunk. And so I'd like to advocate that that fourth goal, which I had mentioned at the retreat, be rekindled, introduced into the group of very laudable goals which we had. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the professor?
Vice Mayor. Dr. Steinman, I'm wondering if, you know, our younger generation is very good with technology. I wonder if there's any data out there for our older generation and how savvy they are on computer ease, email, communications?
Very much so.
I know, I know Dr. Anderson is well-versed, but I'm just wondering in general.
I think there is a fairly large literature looking at that. I know that previous generations of older people have been slightly less savvy, but baby boomers, of course, they invented the Internet, so I think they're more likely to, to be able to navigate all the doc, all the, all the technology that we have. I think people at Waikoa also are doing research or doing projects that are, where they're implementing certain technology to help deliver medical services. And of course, that would depend on having people who are not only able, but also willing to use, use the technology. So we'll have to, we'll have to see how that pans out. One of the eight areas, though, I think, is focuses on that, is this recognition that although there is greater willingness, I think, to use technology, a lot of people, particularly probably the most vulnerable people, aren't willing or aren't able. And so we need to find alternative ways to communicate to those, to those folks.
Thank you. Any other questions? So, thank you very much for coming tonight, and thank you to everybody who's here. This is a wonderful coalition that's present here to work on this project, and it's, I think it's huge. Vice Mayor Steinman, well, and it's very representative, I think, of the community that we have. Now, myself is a, somewhere in the 30s. I would like us to do really well so that I can enjoy these benefits later in life, so that would be great. I think the next steps will be, if council will support this, bringing forth a resolution and a letter at the next business meeting for us to approve to, to show you that municipal leader's support from the city to help get that rolling.
We absolutely would appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for coming tonight. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda, we don't have any public hearings, so announcements. City Manager, do you have any announcements?
Um, we will skip our announcement and save it for next Tuesday. Thank you.
Okay. So I have two announcements to make really quick. The first is the traditional reading of the very old ordinance here on our anniversary year. And the one that I want to draw attention to tonight is Animals Running at Large. It shall be unlawful for the owner of a keep or keeper of any horse, mare, yielding jack, mule, sheep, goat, cow, calf, steer, or bull to permit the same to run at large in any portion of the city of Laramie. And it goes on. You have to have secured pens, and if we find them, we'll take them to the pound, and we shall charge a sum of $1 per day. So if your cow gets out, it's a dollar a day. All right. Or your jack. Yes, very true. So, I have no idea if that's still in the books.
Not in that form.
Not in this form. We have updated this ordinance since the 1800s.
No, $2.
No, $2.
What's the year of it?
Uh, you know, that one's from the books, the late 1800s, so, yeah. And then I have one other announcement. We had a pretty wonderful event take place here recently in Laramie that is the first ever, and that is the, Laramie hosted the Boys Swimming Invitational for the first time here in Laramie at our wonderful facilities, and we are so excited to have that here.
State finals.
State finals, thank you. Yep. And so, but we want to, we want to congratulate all the athletes in Laramie High School for the 2018 state champions in swimming and diving. And we also want to draw special attention to Max DeYoung of Laramie, selected as the outstanding swimming athlete at the state swim and diving state finals that were held this year. And we are so amazingly super proud of Mr. DeYoung. And the privilege, and we're looking forward to seeing him in the 2020 Olympics. That's the plan, so. Next item is going to be disclosures for city council members. Do we have any disclosures on items tonight? Okay. So I will turn it over to Councilor Stoner on a motion for reconsideration before we set the agenda.
Yes. I move to reconsider Resolution 2018-17, authorizing an $11,666 cost share with the Laramie Regional Airport to aid in the cost of upgrading Internet service to the Professional Airpark and Research Center, Cowboy Aviation, the Terminal, and Administrative Buildings, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign.
Second. Second by the vice mayor? So there's no discussion on a motion for reconsideration. This does require a simple majority to go forward. City Clerk?
Gabriel, absent. Hanson?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Polikas?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Stoner?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
That's eight yeses, zero nos, and one absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. Motion carries. So that item will be moved to the regular agenda as item number 9A. So with that, I will turn it over to the vice mayor.
Okay. I move that the following changes to the agenda be approved. We have five changes this evening. Our first change is what we just talked about. It's going to be number 9A on our regular agenda. It's reconsideration of Resolution Number 2018-17. On the consent agenda, we are moving, or I'm sorry, number 8D, we are deleting, and number 8F, we are adding Resolution Number 2018-21. It's an acceptance of public art, or donation of public art. And for change number four, we are moving on the regular agenda, item number 12, to 15A. And we are, should I talk better now?
Yeah, it's in executive session.
Oh, yeah. And item number 18 is our adjourning motion, and we are going to adjourn to executive session regarding land negotiations.
Second.
Second by Councilor Shumway. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I move that the agenda be set as changed.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Stoner. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Vice Mayor?
Okay. I move that the consent agenda be approved and that each specific action on the consent agenda be approved as indicated.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Vice Mayor Steinman? City Clerk, will you do a roll call, please?
Gabriel, absent. Hanson?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Polikas?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Stoner?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
That's eight yeses, zero nos, and one absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. That motion carries. So move on to the regular agenda and go to item number 9A. Councilor Stoner? Can you just, just read the original motion and put it back on the floor?
I closed it, didn't I? I closed it. I'm recording it now. It was from the third, it was from the sixth.
Is that a special meeting?
Um, I move to table Resolution.
We have to put it on the floor. So just read the regular, if you can read the regular motion.
Sure. I move to approve Resolution 2018-17, authorizing $11,666 cost share with the Laramie Regional Airport to aid in the cost of upgrading Internet service to the Professional Airpark and Research Center, Cowboy Aviation, the Terminal, and Administrative Buildings, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign. City Clerk to sign.
Second. Second by the vice mayor? I think we're going to do a motion for postponement?
I move to postpone Resolution 2018-17 to the next regular meeting of council, March 6th. Is that right?
That is correct. Yes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by the vice mayor? Any discussion on the postponement of this item? Do we have any comments from the public on the postponement of this item? Okay. Seeing none, city clerk, can you do a roll call, please?
Hanson?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Polikas?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Gabriel, absent.
Stoner?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
That's eight yeses, zero nos, and one absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. That motion carries. On to item number 10. Councilor McKinney?
I move to approve the original ordinance number 1979 in second reading, annexing approximately 5.76 acres of property located in, unincorporated Albany County, located at 2931 Soldier Springs Road, based on findings of facts and conclusion of law, and set the public hearing for February 27th, 2018.
Second. Second by the vice mayor? Leonard Connor?
Thank you. Mayor and council, so if you remember, two weeks ago, we saw this item at the very end of a marathon council session. And so we just kind of gave you the nitty-gritty, the real important, quick facts. So today, we'll go a little bit more in-depth, as well as the applicant. He has a presentation just to kind of outline and show you exactly what the business does down there, just south of town, so. So this property is located on Soldier Springs Road. It is contiguous with the current city boundary. Again, approximately just shy of six acres. Again, approximately just shy of six acres. This is part of a two-part application. The other one is to zone it. And it is proposed to be zoned C2. As I glossed over last time, Soldier Springs Road, there's a bit of an interesting history behind it. It's actually built on land that's owned by the Union Pacific Railroad still. So, it will not be brought into the city. It will continue to be maintained by the county for all intents and purposes, including snow removal and general maintenance. And so, it will not become city of Laramie right of way, although it will be what is, this site will be using for access. So, um, the only way that would have happened is if either us or the applicant decided to buy the land from the railroad, which they offered, but no one was interested. There was a lot of private investment that went into this site. There were water and sewer lines put in alongside Soldier Springs Road that cost the applicant approximately $600,000 of private investment. And plan is in the future that this will open up potential for development down there south of town, as well as there is now significantly more available water there, as well as there will not need to be any more private investment in order to attach on to one of those larger lines. Just some quick numbers for you. If this property were to be annexed into the city, there would be approximately $10,000 of property tax gathered annually from the property, approximately $52,000 in plant investment fees, and approximately $3,000 annually for services, water, sewer, mosquito, those types of provided city services. So, this was brought to Planning Commission, and they recommended approval. City staff is also recommending approval here on second reading. I'm happy to answer any questions. And again, the applicant would like to provide you with a little bit of information about what exactly they do down there. Also, about two weeks ago, you were provided with some additional materials about the, the at-large company, and given a brief rundown of that as well, so.
Questions for city staff? Councilor Hanson?
Thank you. Just informational question. Is it contiguous to the city, or is there a split in between there? Because I can't figure that out from the map. It's on the, I know the road it is on, but the city limits go down to that property, right?
Mayor and councillor Hanson, that's correct. Looking for the exact. If you open up the attachment that is the Planning Commission staff report, this property immediately to the north of that bordered red area is, does have city boundary right there, as well as immediately on that western side.
My question is related, then. The next one is where does the, the water and sewer lines come from? From the north through that other property, or?
Mayor and councillor Hanson, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, city engineer. But I believe it was constructed on the eastern side of Soldier Springs Road, not within the road, but in sort of a borrowed ditch to the eastern side. Is that correct?
And that is, that is still county property, isn't it? That's, that's not in the city? Because that was the question.
That, mayor and councillor Hanson, I'll need to defer that to other city staff, whether or not it was put within actual city bounds, or?
Yes, it was.
Yes.
It is within the city bounds. Okay. Not the road, but the lines?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
If you could come up to the microphone. Sorry. Got to get it on the record.
Uh, city council, mayor, councillor Hanson, yes, the, the sanitary line was placed in a, underneath a swale on the east side of the road. It's still within city of Laramie right of way when this gets adopted. They had to rebuild some driveway extensions for properties along there, but they were, but they were built back up just fine.
But the, the road itself is in the county, right? That was one of the statements that was made, I think, that because of the maintenance, the county.
The road will still be maintained by the county, but since the sanitary line goes into our system, we will be maintaining the sanitary.
Thank you. Just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Any other questions for city staff right now? Thank you very much. I'd like to invite the applicant up. And again, my thanks for your patience last, last business meeting. Thank you for being willing. Go back and do the presentations.
No problem. So, um, just to give you a little background of what we do, probably, probably nobody here ever even knew what this little company was. But anyway, um, we're part of a larger organization. Yeah. We were, we were established back in 1988. That was actually my father, Robert Rosensky, started the organization. It was RTC, or Resource Technology Corporation. It was a spinoff of Western Resource Research Institute, and they took some projects with them and started RTC. And then in 2011, we were acquired by Sigma Aldridge. They are a life science company. They were around three to four billion dollars in sales annually. And then in December of 2015, Sigma Aldridge, our parent company, got purchased by Merck, Germany, and a much larger organization. About a third of their business is life science. They're also a large pharmaceutical manufacturer as well. And then they, if you own iPhone 6 or older, all the LED, all the LCD chemicals in that is manufactured by Merck, believe it or not, so. Uh, and then, let's see, in February of 2017, which was the kickoff to this project, getting on city sewer and water, was that we were named the, the Center of Man, Center of Excellence for Certified Reference Manufacturing. It, it's, over the next five years, will probably double our site, both in, in size and employees. And just to give you a little bit, because I know, I know that's the whole point of annexing, and is we do have 35 employees on site, and our payroll is around 2.5, uh, 2.8 million dollars annually. We've already added three employees this year and looked at another five before the end of the year, so. So, this is the property in question. We have five structures on site. The large building here is our main building. It's actually three floors. There's a basement. And then the very, the first building, the smaller building, is warehouse and distribution. In Building One, we do all of our production and analytical testing. And then the two auxiliary buildings are just for storage and warehousing. This is a little bit of our personnel and structure. We, our, our whole site is dedicated to production, but we do have R&amp;D function on site, and EHS is very important to the corporation, that we are civic-minded, so we, we have a full functioning EHS individual on site to mitigate any issues that we have. All of our waste management is 100% removal, so we have a company called Heritage Com, and they, they pick up our waste on a weekly, monthly basis. So, none of our, none of our chemical waste goes down the drain or anything like that. Laboratory waste as well, analytical waste goes, is, is picked up, full accordance with DEQ and EPA, and we have been audited by both, so, pretty regularly. We are also accredited to ISO 9001 and 17025. We are also accredited to, to make certified reference materials. I'll get into that a little bit, but, and then we also do a very unique thing. There's only maybe a half a dozen companies in the world that do proficiency testing for, chemical proficiency testing, for laboratory testing. So, our, our major product lines, we make solution standards, we make matrix standards. Matrix standards are, are soil samples, oil. We simulate actual samples that you would go collect at a, a brown field, or the city of Laramie actually uses our samples for their DMR QA testing and, and that, that kind of thing. And then probably 80% of our business is neat standards, which are mostly to support the pharmaceutical industry. And then you have to put this in scope, so we, we make very small standards. They're not, they're not very big. We do, we do a lot of them. This year, we're projected to do about a half a million standards, just 2 millampuels. They're not very big.
But that's the term neat, so.
So, so a neat chemical is a pure, we, we try to make the, the purest material possible for Biden. Production, we, we, we have, we're moving towards more automation, but most of our production is, is hand filling, and, and we have a lot of analytical balances and, and filling suites, and we do have some ampoule machines, which, that's a picture of an ampoule machine. We, we label and package all of our materials on site, and, and some of that is automated. And then very unique for our site is the analytical capability. We have, um, just about every imaginable instrument for environmental chemical testing that you can imagine. We, the entire, we have about 10,000 square feet just dedicated to analytical instrumentation. And that is it. Do you guys have any questions, or?
Questions? Look totally honest. Councilor Hanson?
What you manufacture or produce is not produced anywhere else in the world for Merck, or?
For Merck, no. We are their sole manufacturing site for these products. Mm-hmm.
There are other places that manufacture material like you produce?
We, we do have competitors. Our closest competitor is in Golden, Colorado, Waters Corporation.
Okay. But they are not incorporated into the Merck group?
Any other questions for the applicants? Thank you.
Yep.
That's, it, honestly, I did not know that was going on here in Laramie, so. I appreciate the education.
Well, if you want more detail, or, I mean, you guys are always welcome to come out for a tour, or?
I was wondering that.
Field trip.
No, no, I'm very familiar with Merck, because it's a very well-established, old German firm.
350 years we're celebrating this year.
Wow. Wow. Very nice. Only 200 years older than this city. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Are there any comments from the public on this item? Seeing none. Discussion by council on this item?
I just want to say wow.
I'd really like a tour. I mean, I think that'd be great.
All right. Any other discussion? City clerk, roll call, please.
McKinney?
Yes.
Polikas?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gabriel, absent, Stoner?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
That's eight yeses, zero nos, and one absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. That motion carries. Any objections to putting that on the consent agenda for third reading? Okay. All right, let's go on to item number 11. Councilor McKinney?
I move to approve the original ordinance, number 1980, on second reading, to rezone the property at 2931 Soldier Springs Road, from county commercial to C2, general commercial, based on findings of fact and conclusion of law, and set the public hearing for February 27th, 2018.
Second.
Second by Councilor Schuster. Mr. Connor?
Thank you, mayor and council. So, this is the second part of our annexation. A much simpler item and, and staff report for you to look through. The future land use designation for this area is auto-urban commercial, which gives us our recommendation of the C2, the general to commercial zoning district. Currently, with the previously established medical research company is the use that we're, we're giving it. That is a conditional use within the C2 zoning district, so it does comply. Currently, because of its pre-existing nature, we won't be requiring a conditional use with this application if they were given that zoning. However, as the applicant stated, they do plan on growing in the future and expanding. At that time, we will be requiring the conditional use permit to conform with the C2 use standards. But the C2 zoning designation does conform with the future land use designation of the auto-urban commercial, so staff is recommending approval of the general commercial zoning district. So, I'm happy to answer any questions, as long as the applicant is still here.
Questions on the zoning? Okay. Seeing none.
Thank you.
Do the applicant want to make any comments on the zoning? Does he shake his head? No? Can't see through it or? No? Okay. Good. All right. Do we have any questions for the applicant? I should double check. Okay. Are there any comments from the public on this item? Discussion from council on this item? City clerk, roll call, please.
McKinney?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gabriel, absent, Polikas?
Yes.
Stoner?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Shumway?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
Somerville?
Yes.
That's eight yeses, zero nos, and one absent, Your Honor.
Thank you. That motion carries, and it will accompany the previous item on the consent agenda for our next meeting. All right. So, let's move on to item number 13. Phil Polikas?
Thank you. Hang on, I've got to bring it up. I thought we were going to do 15 first.
15.
We moved it to 15A at the end.
Got it. 36, 46. I've got it right here. Thank you. I would move to approve city council Resolution 2018-18, certifying Planning Commission action, amending the major street plan of the 2007 Laramie Comprehensive Plan based upon findings of facts and conclusions of law, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the resolution.
Second.
Second by Councilor Schuster. Planning manager, Teeny?
Mayor and council, good evening. I'm going to bring up just some information to kind of follow through. If you notice, there are two major street plan items on your agenda this evening. Just to provide some context, you have two items. This first package of items is all items related to the major street plan, except for the Bill Nye alignment component of the major street plan. Your second item is the Bill Nye Avenue component and alignment. It's separated. Planning Commission considered those items. They came together at the same meeting. They postponed adoption of the Bill Nye component until a later meeting. They, they requested more information, which is available in the packet, and then ended up adopting that piece of it as a separate resolution. So, we brought that forward just to, separately to help you in your discussion, but also just to separate the two items. So, what I'm going to do is I'm going to go through the first set of items, which is all the other changes related to the major street plan, and then we'll go from there, so. I'm going to do, let's see. There we go. So, first off, major street plans. Major street plans are the planning documents that the city, as well as the county, uses to align major streets. These streets provide us a general alignment for where streets are going to go as we see development. As we see development occur, we require these streets to be dedicated, built, and constructed per the designation in the major street plan if they are part of one of our development proposals, such as a development subdivision or any of those other items. Overall, the changes that you see here in this package are a lot of cleanup items. They are also items that will reflect changes that were adopted by USAC as well as the council, but not shown on the actual planning or the actual major street plan map in the past. So to begin a little bit of this discussion, if you take a look at the, the figure there before you, we have the first classification, which is a reclassification of sections of Happy Jack Trail in Sherman Hills from collector streets to local streets. These are two streets that basically will end up going to nowhere to allow, instead of having these streets be upsized and be larger, they are going to be reduced down to a local street standard. So that is the change there that you see in item number one. Going down to item number two, reclassification of Sheridan Street, east of 26th Street and its terminus from a collector to a local street. If you're familiar with this area, 26th Street runs north-south and is intended to, or is basically the last north-south street kind of in that area before you hit Spring Creek Channel further to the east. The necessity of having Sheridan Street be a collector all the way to 30th Street is no longer needed because it's been determined that Spring Creek, so the street, two streets to the south, will actually be the street that will connect and go across the, the channel or the Spring Creek Channel that we know it today and connect into 30th Street. Having two streets of that higher status of a collector status in that area is not needed. And so what you'll see is the change there going from that local, or changing down to a local street. If you look also on there, the rest of the, from 26th then over, over to 22nd Street will also be changed, and that is where your change occurs on item number two. In item number three, it is a reclassification of Harney Street. This item, as well as item number four, both deal with Harney Street. Item number three removes the alternates. In 2010, we provided a couple, we provided three alternatives as to where we thought Harney Street might go at that time. Item number three here removes those alternates. Item number four actually places the preferred alternate and actually where it's being constructed today on the major street plan and shows that alignment as it is built and as it will be open hopefully this summer. Item number five is another cleanup item. This is recognition of Turner as well as Bill Nye Avenue. In the old plan, or, and, or yeah, Turner, Boulder, and Bill Nye Avenue, and Skyline. These three roads, since the time of 2010, have, have platted roads now in the area where they're talking about, so the alignment's been set. They were slightly different than what was proposed in the major street plan, and the major street plan, most dramatic change out of all this is where Turner Drive is. This is the street that's directly to the south of the Laramie High School. The way in which the high school was arranged, the parking lots and things required that kind of swoop of Turner Drive. But actually, that swoop was preferred because it did place a better distance of where our streets will intersect on 30th Street at some point in the future. Same goes for Bill Nye. Bill Nye was slightly realigned so that the swoop in there is actually where the street is. Same with Skyline, that's south of the interstate. That alignment is, has been set to accommodate for a future intersection as well as the plating of a subdivision that's kind of right there off of Vista Drive. So if you go over Vista Drive and over the interstate onto the other side of the interstate, the south side, that's where that subdivision is and it has that main piece or that alignment set. Item number six is recognition of Sage, Sage Drive is platted with the 2006 plat. In the old plan, Sage Drive essentially shot due south. When that subdivision came through in 2006, an alternative route was proposed where Sage Drive took that curve to the east, and then there's actually a connection due south to Future Road. That Future Road is Rosedale Road, which someday will extend from where it's located now, much further west, but directly into east. The next section is section seven. This is reclassification of Sherman Hill Road from a collector to a local street. This amendment would basically terminate the Sherman Hill Road at Bill Nye Avenue. This is another one of those, we know we're going to see low density, there's little development left in the area. This is where the recent Mountain West plat was considered and where council did recommend that that be reduced down to that local standard at that time as well. And so for having a major street in that area really is, isn't necessary to serve the, the low density and future access to the east, which really won't be there. Item number eight, Buford Street, is simply a reclassification as a collector between Third and 22nd Street, and then remove 22nd and 30th Street. That's the piece that goes through the ridge and then reclassify as a future collector between 30th and 45th Street. They were segmented and different classifications. They were not collectors, they were arterials. That, that designation, that width and that, that traffic load's really not needed in that area, so it's not something that we need such a high classification. I got ahead of myself there. Tell, tell me next time. Item number nine, reclassification. This is the, the street that's north of Buford Street, commonly known as Asphalt Lane. This is the street going, it's being designated as a collector all the way from Highway 30 all the way across over to 45th Street. This was something that was YDOT had requested in their review of the major street plan. This just provides better spacing for, from a minor arterial, and instead of having such large streets placed close together, it, it provides more of a tiered system, which is good practice in terms of street classifications. Item number 10 is a request from the county planning office. This is for Kiowa Street between Fort Sanders and Highway 287 South. This is at the south end of town here. It's a small piece of, of a street that is being requested to be removed from the major street plan. That connection is provided to the further to the south and at the north, so this was not needed. Item number 11 is removal of PFE Road. That is the name of the road. That's what those initials. It's a road that is bounded on the west side of the property by a river and a railroad track. And this road only, this collector or past collector was a road that would have paralleled the interstate and really provided not much actual traffic support for the area with a highway being located only a few thousand feet to the east there. This was identified just through examination that really local roads could serve this area fine, not require the higher infrastructure, but allow people still to get to the highway and access the highway and all the other collector and arterial streets in the area. So that was taken off as part.
That road comes off of Third Street, right? Off the highway? It says Fourth Street on the map.
Yeah, so Fourth Street, oh, that's weird, that label like, yeah, I see what you're saying. The label's like pushed over, so that, that should be Third Street. Fourth Street's actually the, the green street to the next, next to it, but good catch. Yeah, that's, so it does come off of Third Street if you are confused. It's just north of, right as you kind of cross, it's the first street on your left as you cross Curtis Street there. It kind of loops around right now, it's just presently just a dirt road.
But there is no street right now. This is just.
No, there is. There's a, there's a small, there's a small piece that goes in, that's paved, that comes right off the highway. There's like the old president offices right there at the corner and Fassinell is, yeah, Superior Court. And then it, it terminates a little ways down next to a heating, heating and cooling company, HVAC system company, metal sheet work company. So, and then that is the, that is the package. As you'll see in this package, we removed the Bill Nye discussion. We'll talk about that later. In this amendment package, this was brought forward to USAC. USAC is the Urban System Advisory Committee. They are the ones that provided the direction on this. Planning Commission did recommend approval of this package, which is what you see here today. So I would be open for any questions. I don't know, do you not see any YDOT representatives here for that item? So.
Okay. Questions for city staff on this item?
Makes sense.
I see no questions.
Run.
Do we have any public comments on this item? Okay, seeing none. Back to council for discretion. Any discussion on this item?
I love all the clouds in this.
Fair enough. Vice Mayor.
Just, USAC is, is fully in approval of these changes? Okay.
Any other discussion? City Clerk, roll call please.
Polikas.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Gabriels absent, Shumway.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Stoner.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
That's eight yeses, zero nos and one absent, your honor.
Thank you. That motion carries. On to item number 14, counselor, actually, do we, before we do that one, do you guys want to take a break? It's 7:40 right now.
Why don't we get through this and then?
I'm not sure this one's going to go quickly.
Oh, really?
Yeah, let's, why don't we take a 10-minute break right now? On to item number 14, Counselor Shumway.
I move to approve city council resolution 2018-19 certifying planning commission action amending the major street plan from map 8.1 of the 2007 Laramie comprehensive plan based on findings of fact and conclusion of law, conclusions of law, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the resolution.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor McKinney. Manager Teeny.
Mayor and council, good evening. This item is the major street plan resolution. This is the second planning commission resolution that was brought forward. For council's information, so this, this item was part of the original package that went to the Urban System Advisory Committee. The, this, this item before you is simply to address the alignment of Bill Nye Avenue. If we go back in time and relive a little bit of history, if council remembers, one of the main things that was done and requested by council was, if you remember the Bill Nye Avenue study. The Bill Nye Avenue study is in your packet. There's quite a few pages in it. If you remember, the package there analyzed a series of alternative routes for Bill Nye. Bill Nye Avenue currently on the major street plan goes along its current alignment, and let me align it right here. This, what you're looking at here is the southern portion, if you can see my cursor on the white, the white cursor on the white page. The southern line down here is Spring Creek. This green dash here is the current Bill Nye alignment. It crosses Spring Creek, comes up to Sanders Street, and then connects to Third Street. There is also a Fourth Street connection, which comes in at Palmer, swoops to Fourth Street, and then proceeds north all the way to the north portion of town, or stops at Curtis Street as developed, but continues further north and actually connects into Highway 30 further to the north. The issues in what was discussed by staff and why this area has been brought up continuously is if you can see, there's a significant plating situation that's gone on in here from the Overland Edition of 1950. When the Overland Edition was, was platted in 1950, those were the street rights of way and the major street plan was basically laid in those current streets to conform with what you have there. What you would, what you see here though is probably a subdivision that would almost be impossible to build. There are no access for a series of these lots on the south except for off of an alleyway. You have fairly limited access. You actually have residential access directly onto Third Street. And then also you have the issue of construction of four lanes of a major street for a series of only a few residential lots in this area. So in evaluating this connection, these connections in here, this was brought up of how do we try to accommodate the Bill Nye corridor through here and what is the best alignment? So the Bill Nye Avenue study was done. That study was, took a look at quite a few different options. One of those options being Bill Nye, let's see, I'm going to find the right version here for you. Bill Nye addressing the possible connection of a roundabout at Boswell. So instead of Bill Nye crossing Spring Creek to the north, Bill Nye would connect to the current location where Boswell is and come out on Third Street. The figure that you see here is a figure from the, from the Bill Nye Avenue corridor study. That corridor study showed a roundabout at this location that allowed for Boswell, which is this northerly east-west road, coming into a roundabout, allowing for traffic to go up onto Third Street. You also have a connection to the west, allowing for business access, as well as Highway 287 South access, as well as access onto the on-ramp for, what is it, westbound to Rollins traffic. In that discussion, there were some other alternatives looked at. Let's see. This one here. This is a little bit wider view of the current layout there, so once again, Bill Nye going down to the south, and then your, your Fourth Street and Sanders and Palmer location. There was a discussion about, does Bill Nye maybe only connect to Palmer Street? That is this version. This is actually the version that USAC recommended. So you ask, why is, was that recommended when the major, or when the Bill Nye Avenue corridor study recommended the Boswell connection? So following the completion of the study, this item went back before USAC. At that meeting, the Urban System Advisory Committee considered the Boswell interchange, or the Boswell roundabout and Bill Nye alignment, so Bill Nye turning into Boswell as the staff's recommended alternative. YDOT at that meeting spoke up and said, hey, we would like to evaluate this further. The plans you have are a 30% plan. So design was done at 30%. It was not 100% design. So at the time, USAC tabled that item. That item waited until USAC, or until YDOT completed their review. Once they completed their review, they determined that the roundabout proposed kind of here would not be able to be constructed with the design as proposed. So let me bring up. Let's skip out of that. Let's see, bring it back. My apologies, I didn't go far enough down. YDOT then took this to a higher level of design. What they took a look at is, this is actually one of the designs that was come up with. This is the roundabout configuration that they believe would work, could work in this area. The, oh, there we go. I won't touch it. That roundabout eliminated access to the properties to the west, allowed for north-south travel and access onto the two on-ramps and to Boswell. An alternative, after getting that alignment, they actually came, they actually hired another firm to take a look at it and came up with this alignment. This alignment also has access issues for properties to the west, and you see a very squirrely on-ramp reconfigured, as well as accessing to Bill Nye, or off of Boswell into that roundabout. With that, one of the other major issues that YDOT had was the signage plan. The signage plan, as you'll see here, is the number of signs and the types of signs that they would need to direct traffic in that roundabout on, either onto Boswell, off Boswell, onto on-ramps or off on-ramps, or north or south on Third Street. So, based upon the presentation of that information at the Urban System Advisory Committee meeting, the, USAC considered what other options were presented in the Bill Nye Avenue Study. If you remember, I mentioned earlier, this option was presented and was your option number two within the Bill Nye Avenue Study, Bill Nye Avenue Corridor Study. What this alignment shows, it shows Bill Nye still going north across the Spring Creek Channel, actually heading a little bit west before it hits the channel, so it's not just a straight shot across the channel, and connecting into Palmer Drive. What happens there is Fourth Street is shown right here, coming into here. This was what was recommended by USAC and what was forwarded on to Planning Commission. I'm going to note something that I'll, I'll speak a little bit more to about Planning Commission. Planning Commission, I've considered this option. They agreed with USAC's recommendation, however, they made an amendment to that, which is in your motion, so it's the approval that you see here, to actually remove the Fourth Street component, so the piece from Russell Street or Spring Creek, depending on what you want to call it, down to where Bill Nye will come in at Palmer Street. During the meeting at USAC, USAC, a motion was put on the floor to actually remove Fourth Street. The motion did not get a second. However, an alternative motion was brought back and mistakenly not included Fourth Street in the motion because they'd incorrectly stated the first motion. So, with that, the mistake was made and it was approved, showing what you see here. So, that is why we show you this. This is what actually came out of USAC. After listening to the minutes, discussion all centered around removing of Fourth Street, and so staff did recommend to Planning Commission that they consider removal of Fourth Street, which we think is appropriate in this case. Fourth Street is really not needed between Russell and where Bill Nye would come in. It's just an extra collector street, one block off of a principal arterial. And so, we did make that recommendation. Planning Commission did agree with that recommendation. And what you see here is the recommendation that was provided by USAC. Planning Commission's just does not include Fourth Street. The recommendation before you is to have Bill Nye swoop up here, come across Spring Creek, and connect to Palmer. So, a few things to note. Number one, at the Palmer Third Street intersection, this plan only dictates alignment. This could be a stop sign, could be traffic signals, it could be a roundabout. None of that is determined at this, at this juncture. So, no consideration of that. This is simply the alignment. Secondly, Boswell Drive, there has been discussion about leaving Boswell Drive open, closed. That's been brought up by YDOT at past meetings. This plan does not address that. This is, this is not, this plan is not the avenue for closure of Boswell Drive. It just simply is placing the alignment of Bill Nye Avenue, which happens to be right there through that intersection. We understand that, but it is, that is the point here. It is simply to align Bill Nye at this location. So, I tried to summarize this briefly and, and tried to, tried to give you a quick picture of that. I will point out the only other item, or the only other item that was noted in the Bill Nye Avenue Corridor Study was the possibility of Bill Nye going up to Sanders Street. So, that's the street one to the north of that. The discussion that was had at USAC centered around spacing between the stoplight at Russell and the interchange area to the south of Boswell there. By placing it at Palmer, it's about as close to center as we can get. It's not quite perfect, but it's about as close to center as we can get. Sanders puts it pretty close to the other stoplight, and so that was where the recommendation went in the dict, or in deciding whether they preferred Palmer or Sanders Street. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and?
Counselor Stoner.
Thanks, Mayor. I just have a question to clarify something you said about alignment. So, the conversation that we're having today, the decision that we're making, is purely on where the road aligns. Is that correct? And not on what that intersection looks like?
Correct. It's purely alignment. The intersection there can be discussed through Traffic Commission, engineering work sessions. There's a lot of avenues, I think, if we want to explore that, that's what we can do. But it wouldn't be through this. This simply lays out the location of the road.
Great. And Mayor, follow-up.
Yep.
What would the timeline be for, when would we need to discuss the actual intersection and what that looks like?
Mayor and counsel, my, my crystal ball's foggy. No, I mean, I, I, I don't think that there's an immediate push for the need for some sort of signalization at that intersection or traffic control. I should say that more generally, traffic control. A roundabout, signal, stop signs, et cetera. Now, if development is to occur in this area, which we do see development pressure and discussion in this area, that discussion could come much faster than, than we anticipate. I would say that if that is something that's of a concern, we would want to have those discussions so we can be prepared. The alternative to that, though, is, is we may want to discuss that now, but until it's actually closer to maybe coming to fruition, the discussions that you may have could be 10 years off, design standards could be changed, there could be a lot of changes in the future. So, could be premature as well, so.
Great. Thanks, Mayor. And then, can you explain a little bit, just in summary, why you chose Palmer, or why the recommendation is Palmer and not a street one north or two north?
Mayor and counsel, so, one of the, one of the things that we take a look at when we're looking at traffic distribution is street spacing. So, ideally, what you want to have is major streets, whether they're collectors or arterials, to have good spacing. Typically, when two of those streets meet, traffic volumes are higher. You see backing up of cars at stoplights or other traffic control devices. In this specific case, the key is from the green line down to the south to where the interchange is, and from the green line up to the north where the purple line is, which is, there's a stoplight up here, so a traffic control device, a major traffic control device. The spacing is about centered. And it's truly, it's truly that simple, is by spacing it in the center, you're distributing traffic evenly across the network, which is Third Street and then Russell and Bill Nye. And then, this isn't, this is a highway, but it's still, it's a high-volume traffic street. So, and that's the idea and the concept behind it, very simply, so.
Other questions for city staff? Vice Mayor.
So, just to make sure I heard things correctly, Fourth Street will just end with this proposal? I mean, or it dead-ends, or what?
So, currently Fourth Street exists, if you, where this purple line is, Fourth Street comes down and terminates kind of at a, there's a gravel, kind of a gravel street back here. There's a, I think it's a day, like a dog and pet grooming place, I believe, right now, if I remember right. There's a dirt road right here. This is Sanders Street. Fourth Street exists right here today. It just simply will not be designated a collector street, i.e., it will not be developed to a standard to carry high volumes of traffic. What'll happen is Fourth Street, in that designation, actually will end up here at Russell or up at Spring Creek. So, this is, there's just a few houses right here. This is your Fourth Street corridor. It'll end and allow for traffic then to take a right and get to a stoplight, is what the idea is. Instead of sending them through kind of a residential neighborhood, really, is what this area is right now.
Yes, it is.
You just, Third Street can handle it. The local streets in this area can bring traffic to Third Street and allow for traffic to move up and down Third Street for that piece.
Okay. Counselor Hudson.
Just a question. In every one of these maps, there's the continuation of Fourth Street in this dotted line. What does it mean? Is it, you know, the, this, this little curve there?
Here?
No, no.
Or here.
That purple curve there, yeah. That's Fourth Street. Is that sort of a figment of my imagination, that this is going to be a street? Or you keep on saying Fourth Street will end one block up, but then this, this little curve appears, I see it in every map.
So, Mayor and counsel, what I would, what I'd ask you to take a look at is, if you take a look, your, look at your City Council Resolution 2018-19, there's in a map and it says attachment on it.
Yeah.
If you take a look and kind of look at that area that we're talking about, it shows what you would be adopting. And it, the key here with this purple line is, I'm using this as a, as a guide for discussion. This purple line is not going to show up on the map. Only this green line will show up on the map.
It's mainly right now.
Fourth Street exists as a road today. It does. It's a local street. That's what will happen if this is approved. What happens probably south of Sanders Street is more probably going to be left up to what we see this area actually develop as.
Yeah.
A large commercial development that maybe reuses or repurposes this area might not need Fourth Street to go through there. Other type of smaller commercial development may want to see Fourth Street connect into Bill Nye, which it would be allowed to, but allow for other multiple commercial sites that are maybe, I'm going to say, a little bit smaller in size, maybe in this area, or in this area, or like in this area. Because it's a local street, that would be left up to the developer through the plating process or through the development process.
So, it may be there, it may not be.
Yeah. So, what you're considering today is, should, do we classify this street as a collector street, which is a higher standard street, wider street, and can carry more traffic? Our recommendation is, we don't need that.
Counselor Polikis.
Regarding Fourth Street, I somewhat disagree with Mr., with our planner, Mr. Tini, in that I was chairman at that meeting, and there was a lot of discussion as to whether to keep that section of Fourth Street as a collector or to reclassify it as a, as a The reason why a motion never came to the floor, I believed at the time, was people felt that for the time being, there's no harm in leaving it as a collector, because it can always be changed to a residential in the future. But the problem is, once you classify a street as a residential, trying to put it back as a collector is an impossibility. And right now, it's a very undeveloped street. There is residential on that street, but let's face it, there's residential all the way along the rest of Fourth Street. It's nothing different than what's already there. So, that's more of a reflection of what, and Counselor Shumway was at that meeting too, but I was totally aware that there was not a motion on the floor after a lot of discussion, and I was very comfortable, as the chairman, not having a motion on the floor because I felt that it's something that can be changed at any time in the future, but once you put it as a residential, you're done. It'll never go back. So, I just wanted to bring that up as a clarification.
Counselor Shumway.
And that's my recollection. I, the, the problem we have is, this is developing, and it's developing slowly. We don't even think that the urban systems talked about this maybe being developed 2025 or somewhere in there, because the fund is so, the funding that comes through urban systems is not going to be able to reach that far in our, our recommendations for paving. The, we're starting, you know, at Vista, and we're moving all the way across the third, and we're, it's snail pace. And so, we, as I recall, this is something that there was considerable discussion, and right now, we don't know what it's going to look like five, 10, 15 years from now. And so, I think, you know, it's very feasible that when we reach that point, this gravel dirt road is going to be changed many times and probably eventually will not be part of our, of our collector, you know, system that we have. The, as I recall, a lot of this information that you're seeing right now, we did not discuss. For example, the reconfiguration of the roundabouts. That's something that has been developed by YDOT. And at the meeting, the consensus was, it was just not possible to make a roundabout there, but there was still interest from USAC, and so I think that there's, you know, there's still an attempt to make something there that would be able to move that amount of traffic, whether it's signalization of stoplight, roundabout, or whatever it's going to be. We don't know where this is going yet, and, you know, USAC will meet again, and I'm sure we'll have new information that we'll be talking about and moving on, but most of this that we're discussing now as a council and that we discussed then, we're just not comfortable yet with the configuration that's eventually going to be before us when it's time for this to be built out.
Counselor Schuster.
Thank you. This has been presented to us several times, and the biggest thing I'm going to state is just what Joe said. They figured the soonest we would do anything would be 2025, and they predicted that it would be much further than that. Some of this stuff, they said, you're looking 30, 40 years before the funding will be available because we talked about how much comes from USAC per year is less than a block of development a year. And when we're talking this less than a block a year, you can look at this on the long range, and one block is, well, it's one green cog. So, if you look at it that way, you can see how many years, if we apply all of USAC funding to this, if priorities change, then it stops right there. So, I just, I, I'm definitely with you. Probably the last 10 blocks of Fourth are almost pure residential from Sheridan on, and we still call it a collector. So, I'm afraid, I would rather leave it as is, and then if we want to deem later, and I'm going to say future councils, because if we're talking 2025, what's this council going to look like? Who's still going to be here, who's not? You're pointing at Andy. I'm not going to make a comment on that. I'm not going to make a comment on that.
I'm not going to be here, I'll tell you that.
So, I mean, we're trying to make decisions for future councils, and I, I'm afraid to do this. I'm really afraid to do this. Thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Tini? I have a few, but I want to make sure that he got their questions out first.
It's 7:50 in the morning here.
Couple of questions. So, the first is, so, one of the things, I want to make sure that we're all on the same page, because we've had several seats turn over since we have the discussion about Bill Nye corridor. And one of the- had the discussion about Bill Nye corridor. And one of the questions I have is, I remember when we had this discussion, and council was almost unanimous in their support of a roundabout, and I believe at that time, we had a letter from YDOT.
We actually had a guy from YDOT.
We had a guy from YDOT that expressed support for the roundabout, and expressed that, yes, this was, this was okay. So, this is a massive flip-flop of position from 18 months ago.
Yeah, they were.
Is that, is that correct?
Mayor and Council, I can't remember if the letter's in there, but I, I mean, you had a joint study that was worked on together that came up with multiple alternatives. Boswell, Sanders, Palmer, and then I think no Bill Nye, it went up Ninth Street was another one. And then there was like no change as well. I mean, that's a pretty common one in all this.
I mean, I, yeah, I remember the guy from YDOT being really excited and thrilled that we were like coming together on, on this particular design, that they were all excited, were happy for. He showed us all the different options, I think there were four, and he was like, "We're in agreement, you know, this was good." And it wasn't that long ago, 'cause I can recall it, so.
Okay, so then, I just wanted to make sure that I was clear on that remembrance of the conversation. This is a significant change, significant. Okay, my second question is, what conversations took place with YDOT and USAC? Now, I know we're not talking about the termination of Boswell Street, and I wanna make sure the council's also on the same plane with where Boswell is, and where the discussion potentially about terminating it is. It would be out for that intersection, as everybody knows where Boswell Street is. So, my question is, what, what conversations took place addressing the potential traffic? Because by doing this particular alignment, so the idea with the roundabout was to try to address that traffic nightmare going on in, on South Third Street in a comprehensive way. We get the off-ramps, on-ramps, all that stuff, Boswell in it, everybody's moving better, and we're having less problems. But this one does not address any of that mess in the, on South Third Street. So, was there conversations about that traffic, and how it's gonna continue to get worse with this particular alignment?
Mayor and Council, the, the discussion was, I would say, was not focused on that. Dave, I, I mean, any of the members that were there, I mean, I, I don't recall that at all. The discussion, the discussion was the realization, yes, traffic travels on Boswell and comes out to Third Street there, but I don't recall any specific discussion about, if you move this alignment, it doesn't address the intersection. Now, remember, the discussion was though on Bill Nye alignment, not on fixing the interchange that YDOT has on South 287, which-
I'm entirely sure you can separate the two, but I understand, I understand.
But you are correct in that the approach of the roundabout with the Bill Nye Avenue corridor study was, what's a good alignment, and what, in this case, it ended up comprehensively looking at everything, because that's where it was chosen as the alignment, Bill, or Boswell Drive, so.
If I can add to this?
Yeah, please.
We did not see the various plans for the various sizes of the, of the roundabouts and so forth, but it was stated very plainly and very directly to us that there was not enough room at that place to put in a viable roundabout. That was YDOT's opinion, and I think that's accurate.
That's correct.
Counselor Shumway.
But we still, if I may, Your Honor.
Please.
We still were not ready to give up on the roundabout. YDOT was recommending that we move on, and we didn't discuss it much further beyond that, because it was before us as an agenda item. But I, like I said, I don't know what this is gonna look like when it's all built out, but it seems like now that we're seeing the roundabout potential coming back, which, we don't know what that's gonna feel like or look like, but I'm still open to looking at that in some future date.
So, the next question that I have is on the, is on the discussion with the USAC committee, and it is, Counselor Shumway, you said that the YDOT reconfiguration, so these designs were not discussed at USAC? Because it seems to me this is contrary, this appears to be a workable design.
We were talking about Bill Nye more than the roundabouts, and that meaning-
Okay. And I guess I'm a little confused on the idea that if we make a decision today and move the alignment, how is USAC gonna go back and change their mind and realign Bill Nye in the future? I, I'm not sure I'm understanding that discussion. 'Cause if we make a choice today, and I know we have development that's right behind this, once they lay down that street, I'm pretty sure we're not gonna wanna dig it up and move it. So, am I misunderstanding something?
Mayor and Council, a couple, a couple items. All of the proposed alternatives here, whoops, went too far. This one, this one, that one, the signage plan, that was all presented to USAC, so.
So, there, there was a-
This was all given to USAC, presented by YDOT.
Not those options.
This was, this was why, this was their, this is what they provided to USAC to say, "Here's why we don't agree with," with the Bill Nye Avenue corridor study at the 30%.
Counselor Schuster?
What, what timeframe was it presented? I mean, six months ago, three months ago? I, that's all I'm asking, is timeframe.
If you take a look, I think it's in a staff report, I have to pull up the dates, 'cause I do not remember the dates off the top of my head.
Okay, I, I, just, just a curiosity question, I just, I wanna make sure that we, we have the timeframe correct, is all.
So, I guess, I'm, I'm very confused, I would like some clarification on whether USAC saw these designs and saw that there were potential engineering design roundabouts or not, because I think that that is, and I'm getting kind of conflicting information. I think that that's very crucial to the conversation. So, I think it would be important to clarify whether that was part of the discussion.
Your Honor, we have someone in the audience that was there, that, I, I don't recall having all of that discussion, but perhaps, can you give us your recollection of what was discussed at the USAC meeting? Because, you know, those meetings usually go two, three hours. And, you know, that may have been before us, and I think you can give us some clarity on that.
Thank you, I appreciate, thank you for letting us lead on you a little bit.
I'll do the best I can.
Can you identify yourself for the record?
Jim McGrath, Tobago, is our third member of the USAC and the Planning Commission, speaking as an individual. This was presented. This, this, this scheme was provided, and and YDOT doesn't really like the idea of a roundabout.
Currently.
They, they were just kinda digging in their heels and saying, you know, "We'd rather not do this." And my memory is as sketchy as anyone's here, probably worse, but that's what I do recall. Are there more questions, or?
No, I think, thank you for answering that, I appreciate that.
I, if I may comment while I'm up here.
Mr. McGrath, actually, I, I'm so sorry to do this to you, 'cause we're leading on you, but we need to get through questions with City Staff first, and then I will be happy to invite you up and let you-
Okay, thank you.
-share all your comments. Thank you.
Mayor and Council, if you take a look at your package, staff provided you a memo in that package, it's following your resolution. If you go to page four, there is a section about USAC consideration. So, USAC saw this on February 8th, 2017. That's when they saw the original alignment and the information that was presented. It then came back at YDOT's request on September 6th. The timeframe there was so that they could do and develop all these plans which were presented on that September 6th timeframe. So, that's your two dates that I have, yeah. So, just couldn't find them in the report. Now, on your second portion of your question about the alignment, so, the question was, is, if this is chosen as the alignment for Bill Nye today, can we go back and change it? Yes, you can. We can, we can bring changes back to USAC and, and go back through the process and make changes. The, the question I would pose to council is, if you wanna do that, do we need to adopt this, or maybe just leave it as is for now? And also, if, if you're looking at that, we would, we would wanna remand that back to USAC to kind of start that process over. Now, the, the question would be, is you have a Bill Nye Avenue corridor study, so it's a thirty-some thousand dollar study that chose alternative alignments, and then you have the information and the, the engineering that was done by YDOT. So, the question would be, is if we go that route, what alternatives do we want to take a look at, and what information do we need to gather to make sure that what we present to USAC gives them something to consider, that's tangible, either this alignment again, Boswell, Sanders, something, whatever it is. It doesn't, we don't even have to say what that is right now. The, the key is, is if there's some information, is there a study that we need to do? Is there some sort of research that needs to be done? We need to be specific about that, so that whatever comes to USAC, they have that, that breadth of information and that directive to take a look at and see, maybe it's another alternative, maybe we're gonna just analyze this, I, I don't know. And that's, that's up for, that's for council to discuss, so.
That's fair. Counselor Henson?
It occurs to me, in this plan, if we were to go with this plan, and this becomes, Bill Nye becomes a major collector's street, it's easy to access it from the south, because you just do a right turn. But if you have to access it from the north, we'd have to have a turning lane there, or whatever. And that was, I think, our consideration with the roundabout, that Bill Nye could be accessed easily from all directions, because with the roundabout, you just go until you get to Bill Nye. And, and that's, I, I have no objection to this, well, yes, I do have an objection to this plan, because I think it, it just, it really makes it difficult from the north to enter a major collector's street, which we are designing here, or which we are planning, all the way out east, you know, to wherever we go. And, and we're making it very hard to access it from one direction, no matter where you put it, whether you put it on the next one or this one. I presume it would have to have a traffic light, too, in order to make the traffic, left turn traffic even possible. So, I don't know. It's not such an elegant plan to me.
Mayor and Council, just remember, this only says that there's gonna be an intersection of Bill Nye at Palmer and Third Street. Doesn't say how it's gonna be striped, what type of lanes, whether it be a roundabout, stop sign, traffic signal. It's simply, this is the intersection, this is the location of the, of the street. As I noted before, all that discussion will need to be had by council at either a near point or a later point, depending upon what's chosen, to discuss, you know, maybe a roundabout at this location is, is a preferred option.
So, is this what we're living with this design, right? This is, no.
Mayor and Council, this is for what you, this is for your consideration tonight, and for you to, to see if this is what you would like to do. This is what is being recommended to you by the, by the USAC and by Planning Commission, so we would like to have that, see this discussion keep going, I guess.
Okay, so we've got Counselor Shumway, and Counselor Stoner, and Counselor Pligus.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Urban Systems Advisory Committee is a large group of individuals with a passion for the things that we're talking about here. And I would prefer to not tie them up in a way with our, you know, limited vision of what's gonna happen here, because there's so many moving parts here. We, you know, we don't have the insight, I don't think, that this large committee would have when it goes back then. We usually meet twice a year, and it, and I think it's been recommended we meet more often, because there are some pieces we need to do. But I, I don't want to come up with, with some things that would throw all of their, well, I, I want to make sure that the, the recommendation that comes from then is then considered by the council. When, when we hear all of the different proposals and reasons to, to make alignment changes, or to introduce roundabouts or whatever, I'm, I'm not comfortable in, in changing anything that USAC brought forward to us at this point. I want to more, this isn't something that's urgent, where there's massive, there's development going on here, which is very encouraging, but I don't wanna have it to where we change everything about, which changes the direction of development and opportunities for commercial, residential, and whatever else is coming into this area, by the council coming up with some recommendations of our own, just on what we, you know, what limited information that we have. My preference is not to do much with this until we have the USAC committee take a very, very close look at what's potential here. Can you put me on the list, too, please?
Yep. Counselor Stoner?
Thank you, Mayor. Planetini, can you just explain what would happen today if we do not go forward with this? Like, what does the current plan say the alignment is? Or what would be the disadvantage of not moving forward?
Mayor and Council, so if you take a look up on your screen, that is the current, that's the current alignment for Bill Nye today. If, if you choose not to, to do something tonight, so, let's say you just choose to remand this item back to USAC for further consideration of some sort, this would remain. This, this would stay on the map. So, if development was to occur in that area, those would be the rights of way in which we would require acquisition of. So, those are collectors, they're 80 feet wide, we would require the construction at a full collector status. If you take a look for properties like this one right here, you're surrounded on four sides by major streets. These, this property in here would have that access off of these streets right there. That's where, that's where it would be today, if, or if the item was not approved as well, so. The, the question that I, I think, too, is, if an alternative alignment's desired, USAC is the group to, to begin that discussion, to begin that discussion with. And so, what I would recommend that is if, this is not the preferred alternative, or the alternative that was provided by USAC initially, is to, we can bring that back to USAC, so the council could remand this item back to, to USAC for further consideration. The key would be, is what are they going to look at? What is that closer examination going to be of? The alignment of Sanders, the, the roundabout at Boswell, more directions gonna be needed for USAC to consider, so that they can bring back a, a recommendation that fulfills at least the objectives of council, of what are we, what information is needed to make a decision. The other point to that being is, some of that may be outside the ability of USAC. USAC is not a funded body, so that may require additional studies or, or something. And I, and I don't, I don't wanna try to predict that up here. That's not, I, I don't think we need to do that. But that's something that you could see forthcoming in the future of, to further analyze this, in some aspect, may require additional money, funding, engineering, something, so.
Can I have a quick follow-up, Mayor?
Sure.
Just to be totally clear on the process, did USAC vet and approve the green dotted line that we see?
The, the one that you see here?
Yeah.
Yes, this was approved, recommended by USAC, approved by the Planning Commission, certified by the council in 2010, and then went to the county, because it's a city-county joint map, went to their Planning and Zoning Commission for approval, and the county commissioners for certification, so.
Counselor Pligus?
I'm sorry. You know, I may have a solution to this. It sounds to me like there's a movement within council that, that is not willing to give up the cul-de-sac that we originally talked about, which is on, help me with the streets.
Boswell.
Boswell. And I understand that, and to be honest with you, if it can be done, if it, if it can be done for, for reasonable amounts of money, I would certainly prefer that option also. of money, I would certainly prefer that option also. My recollection of USAC was, that wasn't gonna happen, or it cannot happen. This is what I'd like to suggest we do. Is it feasible for us to have a work session with, right now if we don't approve anything, it's as is. Is it feasible for us as a council to have a work session with USAC? Get it from the horse's mouth, if you will, find out why it's not feasible, or find out what they can do to make it feasible, or whatever. If it works, fine, we're right where we are now. If it doesn't, if it doesn't work, we can always come back and approve it. As far as the USAC committee, any changes we want to make can always be referred back to the USAC committee. But it seems to me if it goes to USAC without us discussing it, again, it's secondhand anecdotal knowledge, and I think this council wants to hear from USAC directly on why it will not work, or what we can do to make it work. And I don't have the answers to those questions, okay? So that's what I was suggesting. If we don't act on this tonight, as I've heard, what we have here is viable, and it's the way it was in the past, and it's not gonna affect the subdivisions in the area and so forth and so on.
Counselor Schuster?
Okay. The picture I'm looking at, and I'll bring it to you, it's probably about 20 back, and it says, "Bill Nye Avenue Corridor Study Design Final, May 16, 2016." And that is where they turned Boswell into a cul-de-sac so it no longer comes on Third Street. And I know a couple of property owners, including motels and restaurants and everything, that are just gonna come unglued on us because of that. And on this picture here, and the thing I want to state is, in my estimation on this, and this is just pure personal opinion, is we're probably gonna start from 15th and work our way towards Third. Because right now we have probably five, six businesses that are working off a gravel road instead of Bill Nye. And I really think we're gonna start that way. And if we go with the current funding with USAC, we would finally make it to Boswell in about 2025. And so, I think, I don't want to offend anybody, but unless we think we're gonna start from Third Street and work towards 15th, I think we're putting the cart before the horse. Because I imagine the design is gonna change 10 times before we get that far. So, I agree, we need to have a better meeting time where we can work on this, because we can argue about this for, till 8:00 AM tomorrow.
Any other questions for Mr. Tene?
Counselor Shumway?
Yes.
Is there any advantage to approving this sooner than later as it speaks to potential development and folks who are thinking about developing in that area?
Yeah.
Like, does where the street may potentially align influence those plans? If property owners are?
Mayor and council, the, yes. Any amount of uncertainty for a developer is always problematic. It doesn't matter how big or how large it is, but that's always a problem. In this area around Third Street, this is the, I've got up here the current, so the way it's today. Probably the biggest issue that I would say from a development standpoint, this is certain, so no uncertainty here. The issue is, is you've got a lot of large infrastructure requirements for little, small parcels of property. That's probably your biggest inhibitor in this area specifically for that. As I mentioned earlier, if you owned property in this location here, I'll just say you're gonna have to have either high, high, dense residential development or some real special commercial user to afford construction of those couple sites. They're not, it's not a large site, it doesn't allow for a large business or a user, so it's a lot of infrastructure. Even down here, access is a little difficult, but, you know, at least you only have a little bit of road to build or not as much. So, you know, that's definitely an issue. We don't have any type of application in on this area right here. However, as you'll note, your next item on your agenda is the Spring Creek Village Plenary Platte. That's this property that's located here. In that area, the alignment of Bill Nye is of somewhat importance to them. The main issue is right here up at the north, that's their, that does change in their plans, so it does affect them somewhat. It's a fairly small portion though of Bill Nye, and so, getting Bill Nye aligned correctly is important. And it's, I don't think it's detrimental to anything at the moment, but in the future we could have someone come in. Now, also state, remember, if there's a development that comes in, let's say in that Third Street, Fourth Street corridor area, they can bring an amendment to USAC and ask for them to start through that process and, you know, bring something more timely in terms of, versus waiting for council, let's say, to hold a work session. But I don't envision that happening, at least right now, because we don't have that, you know, sitting on our plate today, so.
Any other questions for Mr. Tene right now? Okay, so I have, so I think that Counselor Plakas's idea has significant merit. I think a work session between USAC and the council to have a better discussion before we make a decision would be a really, really good job, good idea for council. But, you know, we have members of the public that want to speak, please.
Mayor, quickly, I would ask you probably should include YDOT in that work session.
Yes, sorry. They're part of USAC.
They are part of USAC, but I think as an organized.
Oh, I would go with YDOT.
Yeah, absolutely.
Not USAC, YDOT.
You would go with YDOT?
Did I, if I said USAC?
You said USAC.
I made a mistake. I meant YDOT.
I'm fine with that too. Those are the primary areas, so.
Okay.
Vice Mayor?
Were they invited tonight? Were they aware that we were?
We were told they're on vacation, so.
I mean, I get that, everyone needs a vacation.
Okay, so why don't we let our members of the public speak first, and then we'll come back and maybe discuss that idea? Mr. McGrath, please come on up.
Something about this makes me nervous.
It goes up. Down.
Doesn't change my nervousness. I'd like, Jim McGrath, again, just like to comment in addition to the conversation that's already occurred here. I'm not providing a complete description here, I'm just, this is just an adjunct to what's already been discussed. I think that Sanders, the status quo is undesirable in certain aspects, as is that if through just, through inertia that Bill Nye is built to Sanders, we have a situation where we'll have traffic bleed onto Fifth Street, and we'll also be sending major traffic next to a residential area. So, those are undesirable qualities, and that is what we have with the status quo. In addition, we have, to that, we have two options at this point. There may be more. One is Palmer as a terminus for Bill Nye, and the other is the roundabout. I've maybe planted the seed for the roundabout, so I, this, you know, I have to take some responsibility in that, and I've kind of changed, I've kind of tipped towards Palmer since that time. Palmer, both have quality, good qualities, both options are good. And I think we're in a win-win situation choosing between the two. Palmer is better in the sense that it can be implemented incrementally, and it can grow from Third Street eastward as this area is developed. And it does provide certainty, either, actually, either choice does provide certainty to development. So it's, but it can be done, it can be implemented incrementally. It also, it has advantage in that driver expectancy, it's more of an American solution for an American driver, where the roundabout is more Euro. But again, back to the Palmer, it can be implemented incrementally, and it can be done from Third Street eastward. And so there's some advantage to that, as there is, small development, it could be implemented in a minor way, with the larger plan in mind. The roundabout works better for, at Boswell, works better for, as far as traffic calming. And there's also the opportunity for an architectural focal point in the center, and something that could be seen from the highway, and draw traffic into Laramie. It becomes a visual focal point that could attract and also, you know, be a descriptor for what people would think, you know, they want to be Laramie seen as, it can. So there is a kind of a landscape architectural area there. But it is a major work, and it has major front-end expenses that, if you are gonna do it, it's a major work right away. And given the fiscal constraints we have right now, that is a challenge. So that's something to keep in mind. Also, I'd say that YDOT is a long-term partner, and they are just not real excited about the roundabout and the design iterations that we have at this time. And I think it's important to keep Laramie happy, it's also important to keep YDOT happy, and it's good to stay a team. I'm under the impression that YDOT will do what we tell them, but I don't want to tell them, I don't want to create conflict. So, so those are some thoughts there. I think it is important to come to a conclusion at this point, regardless of the decision, such that development in the area around Third and Palmer can happen with confidence that a decision has been made. So, this is important, I think it's important to discuss with YDOT what we're gonna do. I agree with Counselor Plakas on that. But I think it's key to the development of this neighborhood is to provide finality. Just what is it we're gonna do? Okay, we have a plan. And let me back up though to the roundabout. One disadvantage to the roundabout, and just in addition to all the other comments we have here, is for super oversized loads. It's gonna be more challenging to navigate that roundabout, say with a pressure vessel that has a tractor and two pushers, three-engine combination. That's gonna be a challenge. And so, just to have that in mind. So looking at the two, both have advantages and disadvantages. And then also the comments on Fourth Street, that to remove the little turn there that goes from Fourth to Third, kind of reduces the potential of having Third and Fourth as one-way couplets. That's a long-term plan, that's a long-term option. Third Street is, is about, developed at about its maximum capacity. The signalization we're talking about downtown is really, just will maximize what can be done. You know, and it could be we've already hit max vehicle, it could be that, you know, just traffic patterns are gonna change and what we drive in and how we mobilize, it's gonna change. And so, do we need a Third, Fourth couplet? I don't know, but it's kind of, just understand that we are kind of moving away from that option. I believe that's everything I have here. And commenting on Spring Creek Village on the west side, the decision you make, hopefully soon, affects them and what will be constructed, what they're responsible for, and it also is impacted by the status of the delayed improvement agreement, I believe you're all aware of, of the, that area just behind Corona Village. And that's really a can of worms in itself. So, I'll quit here. I hope no questions.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. McGrath, since he is our Planning Commission Chair? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Oh, yes, can you sign, please? Is there any other public comment on this item right now? Come on forward.
No, we just have to wait until I'm gonna ask a question.
Come on, come on up.
Okay.
Identify yourself for the record and ask a question.
I'm Judy Snook, and I have a question about MAP. Would you just please tell me what that is and what that is?
Spring Creek.
Road. Or creek. This one, this one is the creek. And then there's a little Spring Creek road that goes through there. Actually, there really is.
It's a dirt road.
It's part of the neighborhood, yeah. There's a little Spring Creek that goes right into that. So I assumed that that was indeed Spring Creek, I just wanted to make sure I was interpreting it correctly.
Mr. Tene?
Mayor and council, the bottom part is the Spring Creek channel, so where the physical water is, and then that little gray line actually is a platted alleyway that's part of a 1950s Overland Edition plat. So that's where, it's just a platted alleyway, I think it's like 18 feet wide or something.
There's some Spring Creek road that goes back up there, there's a church up there.
Yeah, that's located about, yep, yeah, right there, here, right.
Right there. Okay. So there is a road there somewhere.
Yeah, there's a little road that cuts around, and then it kind of comes back in here, there's a little eyebrow cul-de-sac, and then it pops back out to Russell Street further down.
Okay. Because when I was, when I visited children, because that was my neighborhood school, I drove back through there, and I was like, that isn't quite matching. Okay, good enough, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? No, there's no other public, okay. Vice Mayor?
So, gypsum, is this, you know, whenever we build roads and we have problems with what's underneath the road, is this susceptible to that?
Do you look to?
To, because, aren't we getting close?
City engineer?
I thought Judy was gonna help us with this.
You guys sit back there quietly, didn't you?
Members of council, I apologize. Could you repeat the question?
Gypsum, am I saying that right? Gypsum?
Gypsum.
Yeah. Is this whole area susceptible to that? In the ground?
General Mayor, Counselor Pierce, yes, this area does usually have high content of gypsum in the area.
So anything we build or potentially build, you know, it sinks or rearranges itself, right?
The design can be accommodated to prevent that. Usually we do that through bridging of the road, and there's different, it definitely can cost a lot more to design in that area compared to a standard, but it is possible.
Okay. Thanks. Thank you. All right, discussion from the Capitol on the side of, oh.
May I ask one more question, Mayor of Plonatini? Thank you. It seems like there's some conversation about having a joint meeting with YDOT, and I was just wondering, how definitive was their answer that the roundabout is not their preference or is not physically possible?
Mayor and council. As much as I love opinions, now, I mean, the YDOT was very, was very clear, that is not what they want to see, and they are probably going to fight that recommendation. That is not their, that's not, they don't want to see a roundabout there. They don't think it's good for traffic flow, they don't think it's good, and they're not even sure if the Federal Highways Administration, so one step above them, would have even approved something like that. So, and that's why that further analysis is done. But, you know, I think, as you mentioned before, if you were to do some sort of work session, we can have those discussions with YDOT and ask them for answers.
Can I ask then why these four slides are all titled, "YDOT Memo, Roundabout Design", "YDOT Memo, Roundabout Designs"? Why are they designing futility?
In your opinion?
Well, not in my opinion, but in their opinion. What is this? I mean, why is this titled that way?
Mayor and council, let's, let me probably provide you a little bit more explanation. So, the figure that you see here is a roundabout design, this is what was in the Bill Nye Avenue Corridor Study.
Yeah.
Thirty percent design, shows a roundabout, basic circle, about what size you need to design it, and shows it being located and where it needs to be. After, so that was that first meeting, if you remember, presented to USAC at the first meeting. meeting. This design here, this is kind of an oblong-shaped roundabout, another circular roundabout but kind of shifted to the south but also shifted further to the east, as well as this, which is a signage plan for the first roundabout, which is here, was part of their analysis beyond the thirty percent design. So they extended the design, went into a higher level of design, and came up with these alignments showing what they believe is an impractical roundabout. I mean, it's drawn on a picture, but it's what they feel is not practical when you put this on paper, design it, build it, and sign it.
Not sign it, not build it.
This is their analysis. So this was their analysis. They had to bring it beyond, they had to bring it beyond this design here to actually determine, could they support a roundabout at this location or not? By going through these designs here, these last three, they say no.
Decide the impossible.
Your Honor, we've listened to the public, we've asked a lot of questions, just got some comments made. I would like to call the question.
Second.
Okay, I can't remember if that's a two-thirds majority on calling the question.
It doesn't require that.
It's a two-thirds majority to call the question. Okay. We can't have discussion on call a question, so we just have to have clerk do a roll call vote on calling the question.
Gabriel Absent, Hanson.
Yes.
McKinney. Polikas.
Yes.
Shumway.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Stoner.
No.
Pierce.
No.
Somerville.
No.
That's four yeses and four noes, Your Honor.
Motion fails, back to discussion. I want to, Vice Mayor, go ahead.
So I would just like to move that we postpone this decision until after we have the work session with YDOT.
Did you make a motion?
I move that we postpone this discussion until after our work session with YDOT.
Do we have to have a date certain?
Can we, instead of postponing, can we do tabling? Because that does not require a date certain. If we table a motion until after a work session with YDOT.
Okay, I move to table this motion until after our work session with YDOT.
Okay. A motion and a second. Okay, discussion on the tabling. Counselor Stoner.
My biggest hesitation is that I don't want to just kick the can down the road and I guess I'm wondering what we are going to get. I just feel like we're going to have a work session with YDOT and hear exactly what we just heard from our planning department. And I also don't think that there's a limitation with having a roundabout at Palmer. I'm happy to have the work session, but I really, really, really don't want this to get kicked down too far because I think this is one of our gateways that needs revitalized and if we don't have a plan, I feel like it's not going to help development there.
Okay. Counselor Schuster.
We have people that are waiting on this decision so that they can put a plot in. And when we do this to them, we're just delaying them on what they're going to do. So I hope we're all considering what we're doing to business because they will employ people, they will break ground, there will be paychecks written, and we're just going to put them on hold.
Counselor Shumway.
After a brief discussion with Spring Creek, I don't believe that Bill Nye is a major portion of their decision-making. Now, we'll find out later in our next item that we have, but I don't think this is going to sideline any of their plans to build out the area that they're talking about. They have access adequate from my understanding without Bill Nye. Bill Nye is a very small portion of their development plans, in my understanding, I could be wrong.
Counselor Hanson.
Just for clarification, postponing would mean that eventually we would be discussing what is titled Overland and Nye Addition's current MSP. Is that the one, right, that ends up in, I just want to be, where are we coming back to?
We would be discussing the item in totality again.
That one. But that one, right? I just want to know where we're going.
Please, Mr. Teeny.
Mayor and Counsel, this is the current adopted plan. It's in place right now today. If you don't do something, it stays there. The key is, is if you choose, this is what would be the focus of the discussion presumably at the meeting, as well as the discussion of the Bill Nye-Boswell connection, which was the recommendation that came from Counsel originally, which started the discussion with USAC and has proceeded on through those different designs to this point today. I would note, if you go with a work session, if there's something else that you feel information-wise you need, please let us know so we can help make sure that that's included in your packet of information or addressed during the work session. That direction is always extremely helpful, I think, for us, but also I think YDOT would like that direction too, speaking for them, to help them frame their discussion as to what Counsel wants to hear about this topic, so.
So those two would be the choices, the MSP and the USAC recommendation.
Mayor and Counsel, not necessarily. I would say that if, through the work session, something comes from that that is fruitful, I would recommend that when it comes back then to Counsel, that it probably be sent back to USAC for some sort of maybe alternative consideration if that's what comes out of it. If this alignment's ultimately decided after the work session is being appropriate, it could be voted on when it comes back at whatever meeting that is, and that's how we proceed through that process, yeah.
Good.
Counselor, please.
I have, I've been processing in my mind the harm in having a work session and in essence postponing this decision. We have a plan. It's probably, in all honesty, the likelihood from me hearing from USAC and so forth, the likelihood is this will be our plan in the future. I'm more than open for USAC to, not USAC, I keep saying USAC, YDOT to come to us and give a better explanation. I want to remind all the councilors a little bit of history as far as why Harney Street has taken 20 years to be built, okay? It's because USAC, or just because YDOT said Harney Street needs to go where Harney Street's going today, and as a council, many councils past said, no, we don't want it there. And in the long run, we just suffered as a community and we ended up putting it where YDOT wanted it to go. I suspect this whole cul-de-sac decision's going to be very similar to that. There's no harm in having a work session, there's no harm in changing it in the future. We have a plan, it's probably going to be the plan we adopt in the future. I say table it, go forward, and I don't think it hurts anybody.
So I want to make one comment for Counsel, and one of the reasons I think that, so I was, I'm very disappointed that YDOT is not here tonight because I think this is a very intensely important conversation that Counsel needs to have with YDOT over the Third Street corridor, and even going back for a little bit more history with what kind of makes me nervous is I have this McHugh Street thing in the back of my head right now, and USAC spent a tremendous amount of money, what, 15 years ago to build McHugh Street, 20 years ago?
That was the city council.
It was USAC. And I believe it was USAC, I stand to be corrected, it was. So they spent a tremendous amount of money on that street and went forward and that street is hardly used. It has a little bit of use on the north end. We have so little money with USAC that I think we have to take the time, and it certainly sounds like there's room for conversation and clarification about what's been presented and getting a more fundamental explanation from YDOT, because I'm really uncomfortable with the, this was the plan 18 months ago in May of 2016 and all of a sudden it's flipped on its head and we don't really have a good reason of explanation as to why yet. So I would appreciate the chance to have that work session with YDOT and I think we can work with them to make it happen as soon as we can fit it within schedules for both agencies. So I would appreciate that consideration from Counsel. Any other discussion on the tabling? Until after the work session. Attorney.
Yes. I prefer if we made a different motion, a motion to table is generally just used if there's an emergency that comes up in the middle of a meeting so that you pick it up off the table later in the meeting after you've dealt with the emergency. Motion postponed indefinitely is a way to kill a motion without making any decision. I'd prefer that we just make a motion to postpone this to a date certain that suggests mid-May, the May 15th meeting, assuming that between now and May 15th, or any meeting you want, but that we then try to get YDOT in for the work session.
So, do you want me to pick a date certain or do you want me to?
May 15th.
May 15th?
May 15th.
Okay, so I move to postpone this discussion to May 15th.
Second.
Second agrees.
Or, sorry.
You get to still be the second. All right, Counselor Stoner, did you have a comment?
I was just going to say I'm much more comfortable with that. My concern is that we have a long list of work session topics, so having an end date where we have to do things in between is.
All right. Any other discussion on this? City Clerk, can you do roll call on a postponement until May 15th, 2018?
Shumway.
Yes.
Polikas.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Hanson.
Yes.
Gabriel Absent, Schuster.
Yes.
Stoner.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
That's eight yeses, zero noes, and one absent.
Thank you, the motion carries, so that is postponed until May 15th, 2018. We will schedule a work session with YDOT on that. And as Mr. Teeny asked us if there are specific things that we are interested in covering with YDOT, please get those to the city manager, Mr. Teeny. All right, let's move on. It is now 9:09 PM, so I thought we'd get one more item on here. Item 15, Counselor Stone. And as a reminder for the upcoming item, while she's looking that up, so we have a hard stop at 10 o'clock, as long as we get this motion on the table before 9:30.
I move to deny without prejudice the Spring Creek preliminary plat as recommended by the Planning Commission and deny the exception to the LMC 15.16.040.h regarding block length based on the following findings of denial.
You have a second?
A second.
Second by the Vice Mayor?
Mayor and Counsel, with the motion, I would recommend that you denote items 1 through 17 on the, in your motion, please.
Denote items.
And denote items 1 through 17.
Does the second agree?
Yep.
All right.
Mayor and Counsel, good evening. This is the Spring Creek Village preliminary plat. This is a preliminary plat that's located in the area we just spent some significant time discussing. For some context, the plat here is available up on your screen. Bill Nye Avenue Corridor that we've been discussing is located on the western edge of the property. Ninth Street is located on the eastern bounds of the property. The subdivision's bounded by Spring Creek on the north side of the property and on the southern side of the property is bounded by vacant property. You're familiar with the area, there's a storage unit complex that's found on the site. First, just a little bit of information before I delve into the preliminary plat itself. The motion before you is a recommendation of denial per Planning Commission's recommendation. At the most recent Planning Commission meeting, staff's recommended motion was modified, four items were removed from that and recommended to City Council. Those four items, staff considers extremely significant and makes the project unapprovable in our eyes, and thus the recommendation of denial. Staff has provided an alternative motion on your cover sheet with the changes that are found there, which is the inclusion of those four items that were found as well as two changes, or the three, items two, three, and four, which are additional changes and changes to the conditions that are part of that. Staff would recommend that approval could occur, as that was the recommendation that was brought forward to the Planning Commission as staff's recommended approval with a recommendation to approve what those four conditions added in. Further note, as presented to you or as recommended by Planning Commission, we do not believe that the site meets any type of administrative or policy goals when it comes to subdivisions. Without those four conditions added in, we believe it does not achieve any of the policy goals that you state for divisions of land or development within our community. So we would note that in your staff report, we have addressed in the cover sheet typically the section that says administrative or policy goals, that's only if you reinstate the conditions that are found within the staff report. So to provide some background, the plat has 135 lots. The primary, or the majority of the lots located within the subdivision are located up here, these are the north side of the subdivision, residential lots located on a residential street that connects into the presently constructed Boswell. Fronting Boswell, you have a series of non-residential lots, 123 of those 135 lots are residential lots, they're anticipated for future townhome and single-family attached housing. As part of the subdivision, you also have the existing mini-storage complex that's located adjacent to Ninth Street and comes over to where Bill Nye Avenue Corridor is located. You also have five future commercial development lots, those are the lots that are located on, that are located adjacent to Boswell here, front Boswell Street. You also have one pocket park, that pocket park's located within the residential subdivision and is located up here, that provides some recreational opportunity for the development. Also associated with that, with this development is construction of a trail that's located on the south side of Spring Creek, as well as construction of a trail that's located on the side of Bill Nye Avenue that is a continuation, although it be it not a connection at this point, of the Bill Nye Avenue Trail that's located all the way at the east side of the community between Vista and Boulder Drive presently. The property is zone B1 and B2 and does have the residential overlay for business district, that's the Robb overlay district. For those of you that maybe aren't familiar with that, that residential overlay district allows for multifamily residential development within those business zoning districts, it's a recognition that there is some of that flexibility there. Depending upon what development type you use, those standards either of the R3 or the B1 and B2 would apply per code requirements. This project was filed on January 26, 2017. It's undergone multiple review cycles. Very, very simply put, there were quite a few issues in design that staff has addressed through multiple iterations of this project before it was ready to proceed to Planning Commission or anywhere near that type of a process. Of note, in August of 2017, we did meet with the applicant's representatives and went through quite a few of the specific revisions and additional information that was provided. At that meeting, the applicant requested that it move on to Planning Commission regardless of where we stood at that time with this project. We honored that request and brought it forward to Planning Commission. Once it moved over to Planning Commission... Following that first postponement by staff, all further postponements and subsequent postponements after that were done at the applicant's request to accommodate different timeframes and to try to work through some of the issues that were found. You can find that information in your staff report or in your cover sheet on page 5. There's a Planning Commission meeting summary section. Of note and of significance during the January 22 meeting is when the applicant brought legal counsel to the Planning Commission meeting to address items that they did not agree with. That meeting, Planning Commission ultimately made four changes to the conditions that are found within the staff report, and that is what is being presented to you as a recommendation of denial with that. Going back for, in terms of context of the plat as well, as I noted, the, there was a prior preliminary plat. This information is on page 3 of your staff report. That prior preliminary plat was filed and was considered by Planning Commission on April 8, 2013, and was approved by City Council on May 7, 2013. That plat has since expired. That was eight lots, creating a mix of commercial and multifamily lots in the area. On March 11, 2013, Planning Commission then approved a conditional use. That conditional use was for construction of a mini storage complex. That's the mini storage complex that presently exists. That was on a parent tract or a parent parcel that development is allowed. They did go through that conditional use process, and with that conditional use process is when Boswell was constructed as you see it today. Boswell was required because as part of the development and part of our code requirements, that connection was needed so that access could be provided into the area, as well as provide business access not off of Ninth Street, which is considered a collector's street for access to the mini storage complex. A prior preliminary plat to some of those was also approved by City Council. That was for seven lots, and, which was future commercial and multifamily as well. That item is no longer part of this, as this is the new proposed design as you see it With this, a few other things to note. Up at the northern side of the site, you have a portion of Bill Nye Avenue. If you take a look, it's bounded by two proposed detention areas, and then you see a black line that kind of runs across here. That portion is a portion of the Bill Nye alignment that addresses, and comes back to the question I believe Mr. Shumway brought up about the significance of Bill Nye being located where it is today versus not having decision. There is an impact on this subdivision, although be it fairly small. The alignment does affect reservation of this corridor, which is the corridor that you see here. That requirement to have that dedicated and constructed is the alignment as it is today. If the alignment was to change, you would see Bill Nye swoop through, basically I'm gonna say through this detention area, as well as it clips a little bit of the property here that's found where there's Corona Villages down here, and this other tract or parcel here as well to accommodate that. Overall, it isn't that significant when we look at the grand scheme of the alignment. But if this is to be approved, we will have to address that one way or the other. That is the reality of the situation. So, speaking more about Bill Nye, the piece that's found from the south of this black line down through here is actually part of an old delayed improvement agreement. That information, if you take a look in your packet within the staff report, there is a section that discusses the BFR agreement. The BFR agreement is an agreement that was approved by City Council of the past that delayed improvement on Bill Nye for this section that had no financial security and no requirement or timeframe to build it. Staff is presently working on how to address that, the validity of the agreement, and how we will deal with that. For this, for the subject of this discussion, it should be known by counsel that that agreement is out there. It does leave a gap of Bill Nye Avenue here that is not part of this development project. So it is something that will have to be addressed in the future, and at some point, counsel will have those discussions when staff has done its due diligence and has done what it needs to do on trying to figure out the background of that agreement. Furthermore, discussion about Bill Nye and actually one of the conditions that was recommended for removal by the Planning Commission and as by their counsel is the component of Bill Nye that's located south of Boswell. This is a requirement under city code that Bill Nye Avenue, as shown on the major street plan, as recommended within our comprehensive plan, and per your requirements for adopting and approving a preliminary plat, that it conform with such comprehensive plan that Bill Nye be located where it's at. Bill Nye and the previous two preliminary plats that were proposed by this developer showed Bill Nye being located here, reserved said corridor, would dedicate it if it ever got to a final plat process. With this one, it is shown here. The applicant notes through legal counsel that they desire not to provide that. Staff disagrees, recommends that that condition be required, and that this is an integral part of our roadway network, required for a preliminary plat, and conforms with our comprehensive plan as such. Another item of note, as well as another condition that was brought up by their counsel, is extension of a sewer line that's located in this location. This is another requirement that within code, services, water, sewer, stormwater, are extended to property boundaries. This is a essential component of our network. Our engineering staff can provide you details as to why that is essential, if you would like that. That is shown, and it was one of the conditions that the Planning Commission recommended be removed. Staff recommends that that item also be reinstated as well. Another point and of one of the other conditions that were noted within there results in the requirement for financial security and delayed improvement agreements on the physical infrastructure. That is something that is required by counsel, or by code. That requirement does require that this be financially secured and bonded for the time of a final plat, which is the standard and customary requirement for all development. This project meets all those requirements for development. Preliminary plats and final plats are one of those. The, should be noted that staff has provided them an option even to provide cash in lieu for this, which is something we standard, we don't typically do, but allows them to put the money up front to pay for their construction so that it can be done more in a holistic fashion. So something that was proposed and recommended by our Public Works Department. Staff's comfortable with that, but it's something we don't have to do. We can just require a delayed improvement agreement if we wish. Finally, it should be noted that also within this subdivision, we have an issue which is an unlawful subdivision. Prior to this project being brought forward, and we believe about in conjunction with the time in which the storage unit complex was done, a unlawful subdivision was created. The parent tracts that were developed were changed without going through city's processes. If you take a look, staff's provided you with some information, which includes a couple of maps. These maps are timelined maps based upon Albany County GIS information, shows the lines being moved. The only way lines can be moved within the city limits is to go through our processes. Those weren't done. Staff, though however, recommends that if this preliminary plat moves forward, that that is an acceptable resolution to that unlawful subdivision, because through the plating, we can correct those errors. We don't believe that there is another option to correct that, however, because a portion of that land has now been dedicated to the city, and we are now the owner of said land, which is the dedication of Boswell Drive as right-of-way. But as I know, staff recommends that if the conditions are changed, we would be acceptable as this is the, as a resolution or an item to... Other items that I would like to note, if you take a look in your cover sheet, starting on page 5, and then going through the end of the actual staff report, you will see the conditions and further analysis related to the items that Planning Commission removed at the request of the applicant. In those items, you will see in italics the actual condition that we recommend be reinstated. And then you will see items depending upon each one, a series of code sections, citations, as well as references to comprehensive plans and requirements for approval, in which we believe and we recommend that counsel consider reinstatement of those conditions, so that we can get to a position where this plat is recommended, is a recommendation for approval versus recommendation for denial. As I know, there's a significant amount of information in here for you to consider and to go through. Finally, we did have, we do have one public, we had one public comment. The public comment and letter is found within your report. Also, the information that was provided to Planning Commission by the applicant's legal counsel is found in the packet as well. If you go to the staff report and go, or to the Planning Commission staff report, near the end of it, we have attached that as the public comment to the Planning Commission staff report. There's a few highlighted sections regarding major street plans and state statutes within that as well. I would like to probably at that point, maybe open it up for some questions, allow for the applicant to speak as well. With the timeframe being what it is, I think that would probably be prudent at the moment, and then I can always get back up here and spend more time going over the subdivision and some more information if you would like.
Thank you very much. And actually, at this time, and with clerkish within the city attorney being that it is 10 seconds to 9:30, we do need a motion to extend the meeting till 10 o'clock?
No, Your Honor.
Do you want to pass the motion on the floor?
It's on the floor, so we can talk to...
All right. Wanted to make sure. So we'll invite right now the applicant, or the applicant's representative to come up. Welcome.
Thank you, honorable mayor, members of the council. My name is Mitch Edwards. I'm with law firm of Nicholas and Tangement, and we represent Spring Creek Investments. I'm a little beside myself right now. I'm gonna tell you why. Because at multiple occasions, right here, just a minute ago, city staff told this council that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended denial of this subdivision. That is not only disingenuous, but a blatant and intentional misstatement of the Planning and Zoning Commission's decision. The Planning and Zoning Commission's decision was to recommend this subdivision plat for approval with the conditions that they found. What they did is they removed conditions relating to the dedication and building of Bill Nye that the city staff desired. The motion that is now before this body to deny this subdivision is an improper and out-of-order motion. Is procedurally inappropriate and denies my client due process. Procedures relating to subdivision approvals and reviews is the application goes to the city staff, the city staff reviews it, and gives a recommendation to the Planning and Zoning Commission. The Planning and Zoning Commission then reviews it and gives a recommendation to this body. What the city staff has brought forward to this body is not the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation. They have not even mentioned the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation, and they bury our information and what the Planning and Zoning Commission actually decided at the very back of their packet. What they instead bring is the city staff recommendation that is contrary, directly contrary, to the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation. This body should not be taking up a negative motion under Roberts' rules, first off, but second off, by doing so, you're denying our client procedural due process and violating your own procedures with respect to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Essentially, what this city staff is saying is that the Planning and Zoning Commission has no role, and what they have to say doesn't matter, and that their recommendation shouldn't even be brought forward to this body. Instead, whatever city staff feels should be brought to this body as the recommendation of the city staff is what has been brought forward. I apologize for my tone, but I'm really beside myself, because this is entirely inappropriate for the city staff to do, and intentionally misleading to this body. The issues that the Planning and Zoning Commission removed from their recommendation for approval were removed because we showed them what the law is regarding master street plans. Master street plans are designated by state statute and by your city code. Not once in the city staff do they talk about the master street plan statutes or those codes relevant to the city process, dealing with master street planning, and what that means. Why? Because it's not favorable to what they're trying to get you to do tonight. The, what you just discussed in the prior issue is addressed in those codes. I've made copies of those codes for you. And they're found in the statutes. Title 15, Chapter 1. And I've highlighted some of these things for you. I want to explain to you how the master street plan process works, and what a master street plan is. That's obviously been lost in this discussion, what it means. On the first side of this page, you see the statutes relating to the major street plan, giving the authority to the Planning Commission to adopt a major street plan and to forward that on to the City Council. What is a major street plan? It's a map that has lines drawn on it with respect to the potential location of roads. But what is a master plan not? You look at subsection B under the first statute. "The placing of any street or street lines upon the official map does not in of itself constitute the opening of or establishment of any street, or the taking or acceptance of any land for street purposes." What city staff is arguing to you is that this master plan that you have requires dedication. State statutes, and your codes that are on the backside of this page, specifically state that the placing of a line on a street does not constitute a taking or a dedication of land. Why? Because as you just discussed in your last item, these plans change, and they move. And what was maybe the plan 18 months ago is not the plan today, and what the plan is today may not be the plan tomorrow. So what does a master plan do to protect the city? Well, that's the next statute, 151509. How does it work? "To preserve the integrity of the official map, the governing body may provide by ordinance, subject to appropriate eminent domain proceedings, that no permit may be issued for any building or structure which encroaches upon land located within the lines of any street as shown on the official map." In other words, if someone were to come to you and tried to get a permit to build a structure on a lot where there is a line drawn on one of your master street plans, this is what protects the city. The city says, hey, we don't have to approve that because we have a plan here. But if you don't approve it, how do you get that? Through appropriate eminent domain proceedings. You just don't get to say to somebody, hey, look, we'll approve your permit for a building if you dedicate this land to us. That isn't what the state statutes say. That is an unconstitutional takings through regulation. Now, if you continue down, the same thing is true with respect to the major street plan... The city says, "Hey, we don't have to approve that, because we have a plan here." But if you don't approve it, how do you get that? Through appropriate eminent domain proceedings. You just don't get to say to somebody, "Hey, look, we'll approve your permit for a building if you dedicate this land to us." That isn't what the state statutes say. That is an unconstitutional takings through regulation. Now, if you continue down, the same thing is true with respect to the major street plan and subdivision, and that's in 510 subsection A. Now, subsection B, that I don't have highlighted there, is actually where the city gets its authority from the state to develop subdivision regulations and to regulate subdivisions. Now, what's interesting, and this will be a topic for the unlawful subdivision, is that subdivision is defined in those statutes, and I didn't provide it to you there, but it's in the statutes, as a subdivision of a parcel into three or more lots. So your authority as a city is to regulate subdivisions and create laws for parcel division into three or more lots, not two or more lots, but three or more lots. Now, if you flip it over and look at the municipal codes, those codes that weren't provided to you by city staff follow and mirror the state statutes regarding what a major street plan is, and its effect upon developers and subdivisions. Essentially, it says, "This plan is gonna be an exception on your plat, it's gonna be an exception on your lot. And if you want to build on your lot, you go ahead and bring that forward to the city council, and if they don't want to approve of your building lot, because there is a proposed street to be put on that property, then they can go through eminent domain proceedings to acquire that property for that street." There's nothing in the codes anywhere that says that a major street plan requires a dedication of a street. Why? Because that's an unconstitutional takings, and it's contrary to the state statutes as to what a master, major street plan is. The other issues that we have here, I can take you through ordinance by ordinance of what the city staff puts in here, but I don't think that's appropriate to do right now, because the motion that's on the floor is a motion to deny this subdivision. The appropriate motion should have been to approve this according to the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendations. And then, if there wanted to be amendments to add conditions back in, we should have been having amendments to that, and then having discussion on each of those amendments, and that's when we'd be the appropriate time to address each of those items and the statutes and regulations dealing with each particular item that you have there. So with that, I'm going to recommend that you vote against the denial of the subdivision. And I'm gonna turn it over to my client to talk to you about what a denial of the subdivision means for this city and this community, and how it harms this city and this community, and how approval of their subdivision helps this community, and you're missing out on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. You can introduce yourself for the record, please?
Mayor, City Council? Yes, my name is Jim Stephen, owner and managing under Spring Creek Storage and Spring Creek Investments. I guess the first thing I want to talk to you about is delayed improvement agreement, requiring a letter of credit or bonding, or the acceptance of cash in lieu. Now, I've talked to our insurance company, and based on our engineer's estimate for the Bill 9 improvements, is $410,000. Staff wants us to put up 150% of that, that's $600,000. They want us to put that up for 15 years. Now, I talked to my insurance agent, and I said, "What would it take to do that?" He said, "$600,000. You have to have, or Spring Creek Investments has to have, $600,000 worth of liquid assets, either in the bank, or in a certificate of deposit, or something. The insurance company is not gonna give you a bond unless you can prove that you can afford that bond in case everything goes south." Okay? So I can't, I can't give you a bond. Spring Creek Investments has very little cash. What Spring Creek Investments has is this land, and it's trying to develop this land, so that maybe you will have some cash someday. And so I'll go to the point, letter of credit. I talked to my banker just this afternoon. What would it take to get a letter of credit? Same answer. Well, you can put a CD in the bank for $600,000, or you can borrow the money and pay 5% interest on it. But you have to get approval to be able to buy that. Spring Creek Investments doesn't have any assets but this land, and I don't think they're gonna give me $600,000. That's just the facts. That's just the way it works. So, that being said, I put a little financial information together, just so we can bring everything into perspective here. What we propose, and what we agreed to with city staff, is to turn over $540,000 worth of Spring Creek property, to put parks, bike trails, dedication or donation, or whatever you wanna call it, for Boswell. That's just not a number that I pull out of my hat. I have an appraisal from 2014 for all of this property out here, including the storage units. That's where I get that number from. It's done by a certified appraisal, he had, the bank had to have it. I'm not just pulling these numbers out to make myself look good. The Bill 9 design and construction, we've already talked about, $400,000, the city staff wants 150% of that, for a street they don't even know is gonna go in there, for a street that may never go in there. Now, the payment in lieu of. Let's talk about payment in lieu of. Staff, over this whole last year, has never told us what payment in lieu of is, or what that amount might be. So are we to go ahead and sign off on a final plat, not even knowing what that number is? I don't think that's, that doesn't, that's not even, doesn't make common sense, let alone business sense. And why would anybody give somebody money to build something 15, or 20, or 25 years into the future? When the city has many other funding sources. I can, I'd be more than happy to provide these numbers to you. I have copies. I have a little bit of, a little bit more information with regard to what we've already done with Spring Creek Investments and Spring Creek Storage. We built, at the request of the city, Boswell, from Ninth Street to where they think Bill 9 is gonna go. $794,000, we gave that to the city. We put a storage unit facility up that now pays property taxes, ad lorem taxes, pays sales taxes on their products that they buy. That storage facility increased the value to $2.6 million. That's, what we've already put in it is $3,394. Already, we've already made those improvements. Now, if you approve Spring Creek Village and approve this plat, we will put approximately $3.4 million of additional infrastructure into this area. We will put two bike pads in, at the cost of $162,000, and we're gonna give them to I've already spent $60,000 in engineering. This is about, I might refer to hard engineer, but this is about 90% of final plat. We did that at the request of staff. So what we're proposing here is another $4.1 million in investment in Laramie, and in this site, and in this community. Now, just in addition to that, we're gonna put all this infrastructure in. We're gonna put water, we're gonna put sewer, we're gonna put streets, curb and gutters in. And then, when we build out the units here, we're gonna have to buy water meters from the city. We gotta buy $60,034 worth of water meters, to put these 123 buildings up. This is not a number I pull out of the air, this comes right off the city's website. Plant investment fees. Now, these are fees that we pay to hook up to all the infrastructure we just put in and gave you. $766,000 of additional plant investment fees. Plant review fees, $139,000. Building permits, $207,000. Now, let's just take a look. Now, that's, those are all one-time deals, those are all one-time expenses, they're all one-time income to the city. But let's look at what the city and the county gets every year. Assessed value of this completed project is $3,961,000, taken right off the assessor's site. At the current millility of .073, the real estate annual tax revenue, that goes on every year, $289,194, every year, when we get done with this. Now, the city's portion is $31,692, every year. Boy, I gotta tell you, I think we've done about all we can do. But yet, we're gonna be held up for a delayed development agreement on a street that may never even go in. And I just have one other, and we'll show you what we're trying to do as far as the buildings and homes and all that other stuff that we're gonna do up there. This, this is a map, I'll, let everybody have one. This is a map that shows what the BFR agreement agreed to do. If you look up in that very north corner that the planners were talking about, in the northwest corner, that BFR agreement covers that, yet they want us to dedicate and build that. But they've already got an agreement for somebody else to do it. Whether that agreement is any good or not, it should be of no consequence to us. So, you know, I'm trying to establish a partnership here, but I'm putting in 98%, and hoping you guys will put in too, I guess. So that's the economic impact of what's going on here, so I'll let Jason explain to you what he's gonna do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
represent Gateway Construction, who will be the primary builder in this subdivision for the homes. One thing I wanted to do first was to sort of, I guess, introduce myself and introduce us as a company and as individuals. I grew up in Laramie. I went to grade school in Laramie, I went to junior high in Laramie, I graduated from Laramie High School. I went to the University of Wyoming, graduated with a bachelor's in civil engineering and a master's in civil engineering. My dad, Jim, who just spoke, he also went to UW, graduated from UW. Another partner in Spring Creek Investments also went to UW. And the reason I tell you that is because we're not just some company or some group of people that came from somewhere else, running through Laramie, trying to make a quick buck and then get out of here. We're really a part of this community, and we have ties here, I have family here, and I just want everybody to kinda have that understanding that this isn't, you know, we're just not here to just make a quick buck. I mean, we're part of this community, and we want to continue to be a part of it, and we want to contribute to the community. So I'm gonna try to be fast, but if you look at the packet that you just got from me, the first one is just a really quick overview of the site, and it's the preliminary plat laid over an aerial view, just to kinda help give you a feel for the development and how it lays out with what's already there. The second one is a preliminary plat colored up, just to show you the residences and the building footprints that we anticipate putting in. The second is a colored rendering of the units that would face Ninth Street, to give you an idea of the type of structures and buildings and houses that we would like to put in here. I also included some black and white CAD renderings of the townhomes, other townhomes that we would include in this project, and also on the last page, some 20s. So like Mitch said, I'm up here to ask you, I guess I'm a little bit shocked, so I wasn't really prepared to present this way, because I wasn't thinking that we were gonna be trying to convince you not to vote for approval. But I guess really quick, I just want to point out some of the things that we'll be missing out on here if we, if you guys decide to vote to not deny this preliminary plat. You heard all about the sales tax, property tax, permit fees, sewer and wire fees. I think it would be tragic to just disregard what your Planning Commission has recommended for you. In this site, our plans are to construct affordable housing. We're looking at putting in houses that are under $250,000. Earlier in this meeting, we had somebody here that was talking about housing for, you know, older generations aging in place. This is a perfect location for that. There's no basements on these houses. The ranch-style houses that we would build in here could be built with no steps, and it's a great opportunity for that. Your own studies and our studies show that you need this type of housing, you need lower-income housing. I think one study I read said that you anticipate needing 1,500 living units by 2020. Well, if you deny this, these all go away. We're planning on dedicating an internal park, we're doing all of this trail building that city staff has required us to do, and we don't have an issue doing that, we think it adds value to the city, it adds value to this development. The other thing I think too, to consider before denying this, that is, if you guys deny this, this goes away. And if this goes away, then all the benefits to the city go away. We've already invested so much money into this, and so much time into that, and the main issue, and I think it's maybe become a little overcomplicated, it's really not that complicated, the issue is really Bill 9, and being expected to either put up the money, or to pay for, or dedicating land for a road, that we don't even know where it's gonna go. You guys have already talked about this, you don't even really know where it's gonna go, and yet, we're supposed to put up hundreds of thousands of dollars of money for some future road, that we don't even know if it's gonna be built. And to be honest, that puts this project over, it can't, it can't make it, having to do that. There's already so many requirements for this project, just the way it's shaped, the limited number of lots we can fit in here, having to do, you know, mitigation on the soils, making sure that we build the streets right, so that once we dedicate them to you, you don't have to come back and fix them. Just all of those things make this property a very challenging property to develop, and that's why we've been working on it for the last, I don't know, five or six years. So I guess I would just, you know, throw that out there and, you know, just ask that you don't vote to deny our preliminary plat. Any questions?
I don't think we're gonna take questions tonight. Thank you for coming out. So we have about three minutes. So we have about three minutes till we have a hard stop. Is there anything else that the applicant wanted to give us very quickly? So because of the time for counsel, I'm going to recommend a postponement, but city attorney?
Mayor, can I weigh in on that postponement?
Yes, please.
I recommend that too. I'm very interested to hear what the applicants have to say, and that's not my province. But what Mr. Edwards has to say is my province. Heard several constitutional amendments mentioned, state statutes, and all the way through city ordinances. I haven't been able to see that argument and then be able to analyze it. So what I would, and because of my schedule, the first time that I'll be able to analyze those arguments, if Mr. Edwards could get me a letter or whatever form, whatever you form, whatever form you want to do it in over the next couple of weeks, then I'm gone for a bit, but on April 3rd, I'd be able to render a legal opinion on those matters. I have no opinion on the applicant's, you know, heartfelt practical issues. That's not what I'm talking about. But those legal issues certainly concern me, and if they're articulated, I can respond, give you an opinion by April.
So city attorney, do you recommend the postponement to be date-specific to April 3rd? Or do you want the postponement to be for the meeting after April 3rd to allow?
I'll take Mr. Edwards' guidance on this. If you can get me something in, what, two weeks in writing?
Well, Mayor, my client does not want to delay that long.
And Mayor, I'm not, I mean, when the argument starts off with due process and then moves on to eminent domain, I'm not prepared to give you a legal opinion on those matters.
So...
And this has been going on for five years, these preliminary plats.
So it is. I'm concerned about the time and the hard rules that we have here. I have about 50 seconds to either wrap this up or it's just going to push two weeks because the meeting will be effectively over. So I either need a council member to put a motion on the floor to postpone to a date certain, or we're just going to let it roll. And we'll talk about postponements again in two weeks.
Your Honor, prior to that postponement, I'd like to make a motion that we suspend the rules.
We can't.
We can't.
We can't.
Cannot do that?
We're on a hard stop. There's no extension of the meeting.
And that's because this rule is in the count.
I got you. I got you. Okay. I take that back.
I need to postpone the topic until April 3rd. Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I think we've heard from the applicant that they're not in favor. City clerk?
Hanson.
Yes.
McKinney.
No.
Polikas.
No.
Shumway. Schuster.
No.
Stoner.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Somerville.
Yes.
That's four yeses and four noes, Your Honor.
That motion fails. This item, because it is now 10 o'clock, we do have to move to our adjournment item. This item will push to the next meeting in two weeks with no action taken. Counselor Hanson?
Your Honor, I just wanted to observe that...
Counselor, we need you to adjourn us.
Oh, okay.
So sorry. Sorry. I wasn't specific. Can you adjourn us, please?
I will adjourn us. I would move that council adjourn to executive session regarding real estate by aming statute paragraph 16-4-405 in brackets A and Roman numeral seven.
Second. Any others in favor? If you have a say, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?